Good to meet you.
Yeah, just in time. Good evening, welcome to the Board of Selectments meeting for Monday, July 22, 2013. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So on tonight's agenda, we have an organization we are going to review the mail. At 7:10, we'll have public input from board members. At 7:15, we have a joint meeting with the library trustees to fill a vacancy. At 7:30, we'll go over some town board appointments. At 7:45, we have a joint meeting with the finance committee. At 8:30, we're scheduled to talk to the highway department and receive an update on the Shoah Road and to hear about the transfer station fees. 8:45, we have town administrator and assistant town administrator for finance and budget. And 9:15, we'll have other business. So with that, Keith, if you would tell us what we have for mail this year.
Well, actually, what I have for you is something that came in today, and I think it was worth the wait. It's, you're invited to a barbecue on Friday, August 2 at noon, hosted by Senator Jamie Elder to Representative Jim Rosero, and that's going to be at the senior diner at this location.
Is it, we're invited to join the seniors? Is that mainly for seniors, or is it just for constituents?
You're always invited to attend, yeah, as future seniors.
Some closer than others.
Okay.
You enjoyed that, didn't you?
They've already sent me an AARP card. I got it six years ago.
I'll be on vacation, so I won't be real intense.
Yeah, I'll be on vacation as well.
I will be back from Chicago and ready for barbecue.
I'll try, I'll try. Just hard with the work. Can we get with that? Hey, you work close by, so, yeah, that's good. Okay, all right, thank you, Keith. With that, we'll move to public input. Anybody for public input? No?
All good.
Okay, well, that's good. We don't have, well, we must be doing a good job. Must be doing a good job, right? I guess it's good, there's no criticisms, I suppose.
Give it time.
There are also no compliments at this time, so it's a tabloid's word.
We have to say it's good, because we can move on.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
Okay. Board members, do you have anything?
Just a couple things. Once again, I mentioned the third Thursday. Third Thursday went off again with a complete success, although that day was extremely hot. And right when it started, I thought we weren't going to have everyone, then we had rain on top of that, but as it turned out, I think it cooled things down, so we had a pretty good crowd turn in by about 6:30. Once again, it was a great success, and I thank everyone, the park, I reckon, highway department, everyone, the police department, everyone who's involved in getting it going, because it's still a great community event.
Yeah, I just wanted to share with folks that this Sunday is the fifth annual Kristen's Ride. The Ho and Shell family here in town have started this fundraiser to help families whose children have been diagnosed with cancer. You can go to www.kristen'sride.com to get more information about the event.
I'm talking about cookouts and barbecues. My mom attended the Littleton Patrolman's Union's COA barbecue that Sajad Parnad put on, and from, unfortunately, I had to work, so I couldn't go, but my brother and my mother were there and said it was absolutely fantastic. They did a great job, so thank you to the police department and the union.
Okay. That's it. I would just have one thing. I'd like to congratulate the Rotary for a first-class event that they put on last Sunday, the Appleman, and I think we have to acknowledge and, or at least, or congratulate Jenna and her team for winning, what, fourth year in a row?
Third.
Third year in a row, okay. So what is it, first, first place all women's team?
Yes.
Really, I think, great, okay.
I hit a tipmunk on my bike.
Oh.
It was a tragedy.
Blossom. Just one other thing, Jenna and I both attended this morning the opening of the Policeman's Boot Camp, and I think it's a great success with what they're doing. I don't know how long you stayed, I, we were there for a while, and I think the part of me most impressed about is the amount of police officers that donate their time for this program, and it costs the town nothing for what gets done, so I thank the police department and the police association for what they do.
Just one more thing, I want to go to public input. If there's a business in town who has anything to say, anything to offer, just identify yourself for a minute.
I'm Maria Tringali. I work over at the Littleton Wellness Center, which we are now renaming Nutrition Plus for Henry Brando, reopening on August 3, and everybody's invited, and I wanted to promote that we're doing a free fit camp. We do it Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, 6:30 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., and it's free to everybody who wants to participate, so we just wanted to promote a healthy, active lifestyle for the residents.
And where would people go, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, 6:30 a.m. and 6:00 p.m.?
We're right on Littleton Common.
Oh, that's where you meet?
Yeah, we meet it right at the common, yeah. Yeah, and if there's any change, we do have a Facebook page, like, we were at Fay Park a couple of times, we actually worked out at the beach one morning, so we're having a great time. Great.
I like it, because it ties into our goals, to promote more active, healthy living. And I may be out there one day, I don't know about being out there on the common doing that in front of everybody, I will see.
I'll remember last.
All right. All right, thanks for coming, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. 7:15, joint meeting. All right. Let's see, want to jump down to minutes, or, I think everything else, we're kind of waiting for other people.
Two minutes.
So there were two sets of minutes, yes.
I almost brought my glasses, so I could read tonight, I left them on the counter, but I think I can do all right. One of, we can't vote on anyone.
The one you, we're not there.
Oh, we don't have a quorum of the members that were here for that one, right?
We have two of three from the eighth.
Can we approve them that way? Can I ask before, he always asks before with the...
You can cure it at your next meeting, but if it were the, if it were an election that intervened, and you have a quorum, you could still go back and approve someone else's minutes as opposed to never approving.
We should just table them until...
All right, so table them both, so we don't get too confused.
So we're looking at the minutes of July 15, 2013, and you shoot.
Oh, no, you want to, you want to remember those, okay.
All right, move that we...
Oh, I do, sorry, and I mentioned this to Keith, the vote with respect to Otari and Bonkers was actually a four-one vote. Chairman voted nay on those two, and I mentioned it to Keith.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I fixed them on my online summary. I haven't seen them, actually.
I think there's also, I can't find it here, the one Jenna, you abstained, I think I was the nay vote on that one on Bonkers. It was three-one, and one abstained.
There was a three-one-one vote as well. It's, oh, it's on the last page, it's the second paragraph. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's the one.
Yeah, you abstained, right, Jenna?
Jenna abstained, and I was the negative vote.
I thought it was Ted.
No, not that one. Move that we approve the minutes of the Board of Selectment meeting for Monday, July 15, 2013. Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Everybody? Okay. If everybody's here, then we can move on to the joint meeting, right, so public hearing, so we can jump right into that. And so, as most people know, that Jenna came from the library trustees, and as she was voted to this board, she resigned her position, and now, the way we film in town is to have a joint meeting between the, between the two boards and to fill that vacancy. I believe we have three applicants, so I think we'd like to hear from them.
Do you have to read the...
Do I need to read the public notice, Keith?
You can.
Yeah, okay, I think we're all set. So I think we can move right to hearing from the candidates, after hearing from the trustees, if they have any introductory comments.
Are you in session, trustees?
No, we adjourned from our last meeting. Now we're in your meeting.
So would you like to vote into session? Call yourselves to order?
Just call yourself.
Call yourselves to order.
Start our meeting, restart it.
I can take minutes.
Okay, thank you.
You can use Jen's minutes.
Yeah, that's my answer.
Did you have anything to add before we move on?
I didn't know what the process was we were going to follow, and who's asking questions, and how...
Typically, yeah. Typically, what I would like, I think what I've seen in the past is, we will just ask the applicants to go through, we can stop and ask each one questions, or we can question them afterwards. Either way, I think it's probably cleaner to ask each one questions after they speak, and then we can have a discussion and move to a vote. All right, so we can start with, and correct me if I pronounce the name wrong, Alan, Alan Mullick? Would you like to stand or come to the front, do anything to introduce yourselves?
What's best, everyone?
Can you hear me? Can you see me?
Yes.
So just tell us a little bit about yourself, and why you'd like to be a trustee for the library.
I'm a registered professional engineer in Massachusetts, and I understand you may be building at the library? Is that, it's somewhere, I heard a whisper about that.
Yeah, there's been a whisper, yeah.
As part of what I do, I work with commercial buildings, like the Falmouth Library on the Cape, and the Keene Library in New Hampshire, and I've worked in this building, and we've got, what was it, an Energy Star Award. I know a lot about buildings, I know a lot about energy efficiency, grant writing, raising funds for energy-efficient equipment, and lighting, and HVAC equipment, and air handling, and all of that. I don't know anything about libraries, except I go to this one quite a bit, and I'm really good, I've never kept a book out late, so I think I'm in good shape, I think I'm in good standing there.
Has the deputy chief smiled?
We'll verify all records.
People have a query check.
What I think I could add would be, should you decide to roll forward with a new facility, I think I could help out, working with architects and engineers, giving you what I think would be a green building, a LEED certified, if that's the way you want to go. I know quite a bit about that, and again, I've done it before, so I can't think of anything else to say.
Okay.
Is that good?
Thank you.
That's fine. Does anybody have questions?
Are we going, questions now, or you want to add?
Let's go, while they're on the spot.
So outside of the building, do you have any specific goals or ideas for the library? Things you would...
Well, we have, this is our entire company, my wife and I, and we have worked with libraries to make them comfortable and well-balanced, balancing natural light with highly efficient light, and using energy really efficiently, and making, and again, making it a building that the community is proud of. And I think what we have done over the years is maximized funding, because I bet there's nobody that has infinite funding, and I, and so raising money and grants and using utility funds is, is our thing. So my goal would be to make a library that we'd be proud of.
And have you been on town boards in the past?
Never. This is my first foray.
Okay.
Just specifically, what do you enjoy about our library?
Wow, you mean, besides the librarians?
Besides the librarians, okay, that's good to start with.
They're a terrific bunch. We use the library all the time, we're audiobooks, and it's easy to use, it's convenient, information please, all of that. We do, we do order books from the consortium, and we try to donate to and from, and so on and so forth, so specifically, we just save money instead of buying books, we use yours.
So you're a full-service user.
We are, we are indeed, we are indeed.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I got a question. Oh, wait. Oh, okay. Yeah. I have, kind of a related question, but the permanent, the permanent municipal building committee is always looking for volunteers. Boy, would you be perfect. So I think, depending on how it goes tonight, and if you're open, the PMBC is a great, a great committee to have all your talent and your expertise part of, so I just wanted to make that as a comment, that's all.
Well, thank you. We're, I'm sliding into retirement, I now work for this woman here, and...
Good for you.
As my work winds down, I'm looking for things like that, so I'd be open for that.
Perfect.
And thank you for putting in for this position also.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, move on to Jean Bracken. Would you like to introduce yourself?
My name is Jean Bracken, I live on Goldsmith Street. We've lived in Littleton on Goldsmith Street since 1972. I've been a big user of the Ruben Moore Library all that time. The library staff has helped me write several books, which is not a small thing, and they also provide me a cup of tea when I fall asleep. I don't have any of the skills this gentleman has. I worked with building committees from the point of view of library users. I am a retired librarian. I've worked in every kind of library there is, except a school library, I volunteered in a school library, I've worked in a public life, I've worked at a business library, Arthur D. Little Library, the Research and Development Library, I worked at the BU Medical Library, I worked at the University of New Hampshire Library as an undergraduate, I worked at the Concord Public Library in New Hampshire as a summer job, and my real forte has been public libraries, I worked at the, I worked at a reference library in Acton for 15 years, and the reference library in Lincoln for 17. I am now retired. I was a trustee of the library 30 years ago, and now that I'm retired, and I, again, I'm looking for some different things that I thought that might be helpful for the community, so.
Well, it's great, I appreciate your application. My question is, how are you going to be able to cover the library trustee meetings for the independent?
I can't, I can't. In fact, I actually...
By the way, do you cover them?
And I personally would not be able to write about the library either, and I've done some articles, and I had questioned that, I said, you know, I might be more valuable for the library as being able to write articles, I don't know. But I did talk to the previous editor, Holly Camaro, and she said, as long as I didn't write about the library or the library trustees, it wouldn't be a problem. Today, I talked to the new editor, who said, oh, no, that's not going to work. So I don't know what the bottom line is.
Well, wait a couple months, be a new editor. Okay. Does anyone have any serious questions for?
Do you have any specific, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Do you have any specific goals in mind for the library, Jean, or you just...
I think the library's programming has been terrific, and I would like to help in that in some way if I can. I think the One Town One Read program that was done a year ago was terrific. It's a book I never would have read, The Omnivore's Dilemma, and every time I read a label now, I think, ooh, it's got corn syrup. And I just, that's one of the things, there's certainly space issues, but I appreciate the fact that the library does have, I borrow DVDs, I borrow audiobooks, I borrow, I'm a big reader, and I borrow all kinds of books, fiction, nonfiction, the whole nine yards, and I was there the other day using the internet, so, use a little bit of everything. Just keep it up.
I think she answered most of the questions.
You answered all the other questions.
Do you have any fundraising experience?
None. None successful, that's all.
Only failed.
That's all? Okay, can we move on to Peter Church?
Hi, I'm Peter Church.
Why don't you, why don't you go up here? I don't like trustees are craning their neck when they're...
I can't even move. Peter Church, I am a resident of Littleton for 13 years, and prior to that, was a resident of Acton, they use the Littleton Library, so I'm tied. I have three children, I have a 15-year-old, a 13-year-old, and a 10-year-old that are avid users of the Littleton Library. I also have been working for the state of Massachusetts, I'm the state forester, so the architecture work that you do, I could maybe get some local wood for the new library, state cut wood. And like I said, I've been an avid, avid user of the library, I've participated in the search for the library director, I've been on the long-range planning committee, and I've participated in a couple other town boards, so I'm on the Littleton Open Space and Recreation Implementation Committee, and I'm on the Littleton Conservation Trust as well. So just a few things that I do, I think a few of the things that I'd like to see at the library, certainly exploring a new space, I think is pretty important. One of the things that I really enjoyed, especially with my kids as they grew up, were Sunday hours in the fall, winter, and spring, so having extra hours, I'm a strong advocate for, especially Sundays. So just a couple of things that I'm interested in.
Thank you.
With your time commitment on the other boards, Peter, do you feel like you could spread yourself enough for our monthly meetings plus what we usually have?
I think I could. So I'm the Littleton Conservation Trust, it's a meeting a month, and it's not at the same time as the library meetings. And the Littleton Open Space Committee, I've been on for 10 years, and one of the primary goals of the Open Space Committee is to write, help write the Open Space Plan, so at least in the last go-around with the Open Space Plan, we kind of tailored our meetings to meet everyone's needs, and I get to plan and write them, so I do think that I could fit in. I do, I do travel a little bit, maybe about four or five times a year for a week at a time, but outside of that, I usually run all the way around.
Do you have any fundraising screens?
I don't, I don't, being in the state center.
All right, thank you very much, thank you to all the applicants. So at this time, I think I'd like to go to the trustees, I'd kind of like to hear where you're coming from, I think I will support, you know, what decision you make, I think it's your, I don't want to force anyone applying, you know, I mean, I definitely have my opinion, if you'd like to hear, I'll give it to you, I never want to hold my opinion, but I'd like to hear if you have thoughts, you can go right to a motion, if you want to have a little discussion, that's fine.
Yeah. I don't know what you want specifically, I mean, do you want us to discuss this, or do you want to discuss it together, or...
Yeah, well, discuss it, if you have anything to say about where anybody's leaning, or what your thoughts are, I know it's very difficult with people in the room, but just because we speak favorably about one, doesn't mean you're not in favor of the other, so...
That would be like...
No, no, that's fine.
That's what I'm gonna make of you.
I mean, I'll get you, I'll break ice, if you want to hear it from me, I mean, I feel that somebody with library experience, and somebody as experienced as Jean Bracken would be a valuable addition to the trustees.
I agree with that, too. My concern would be the conflicts with the independent, and Jean's done a wonderful job of promoting the library in the independent, and I would hate to lose that, right? And though she would be valuable on the board, I think she's also very valuable on the publicity side, and that would be my concern there, right? Alan's got a lot of experience for the building, and I agree that he'd probably be a better fit for PMBC than the library from that perspective, because the building is just one aspect of the library, and it's down the road more where PMBC's always got projects along those lines going on. And I've worked with Peter on the selection committee, and he's done a wonderful job for us on hiring someone. I had a volunteer choice for hiring a director, so I don't question his dedication there on stepping up, and so...
Just as a point of clarification, this appointment is from now until the election in May, and then the person, if here she chose to, would run for the remaining one-year term.
Right. You know, I have to agree that, you know, losing that, that independent connection would be a vital piece, unless we can get some of the else to volunteer and write. And I think, you know, as you said, Peter's dedication for the search committee and his willingness, all three, I think Alan is, is an engineer, and a very viable and knowledgeable guy, that would be awesome on the PMBC. You know, because we're always, we're always looking for those types of folks that can bring that knowledge to the table, so I guess that's my opinion.
And for myself, I'm familiar with the five trustees, none of whom I believe have fundraising experience, so the fact that there is someone who's stepped forward and does, I think makes Alan an asset with respect to that. Again, it's, they're all library users, being on the Board of Library Trustees is a lovely experience, which you will enjoy thoroughly, and I, I, you know, I have mixed feelings about what would be your best fit, but I think thinking forward to what's going to be happening down the road should weigh into your calculus.
If I can say something. Sure, thing. Now, I want to take my lead off you, because we're the other ones who we've worked together, but in my opinion, Jean, is, is there a way that you could be on that board and find someone else at the independent to cover it? Because obviously, with the background you have, you have years and years and years of experience.
This is televised, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
I don't want to pin down who you feel that.
There is a reporter now, the library, the newspaper does have a reporter who seems to be doing a good job, if you can, you know, get their attention. I don't know, I have, I totally agree, you know, totally experienced about the whole thing. I probably would not have applied if I'd known that they would probably say, you can't write for the paper.
Oh, you can't write for the paper at all?
I don't know. That's what today's decision is, but it was, I'm going to have to write for somebody higher up, so, I don't know. So I like writing about the library, so I don't know what the answer is.
We don't want to put you out of work for a volunteer position, though, Jean.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, that's sort of one thing.
No, if you have a one-year appointment, you can figure it out, or not even a one-year, just until May, you can figure it out then, and maybe give them a decision. But, you know, so it is a joint meeting, we're all, all nine of us together, so anybody can make a motion, and we need six to carry the motion.
One else have any comments?
No. It's very... It's very tough, because all three are, do bring something wonderful to the table.
I know, but everybody came here knowing they might not get it, and we're all grownups. We're all grownups. We all have, we all have other boards that we can volunteer for if we all guys ever here.
But not this board. This is a special board.
You could be up there someday.
Yes.
Right? I could get that done, we know it.
Yes.
Would it make life easier if I said, I'll be happy to work on the building committee and they'll bring it, make it down to two people?
Sure, you want to pull your application?
Well, I, it wouldn't make it.
I don't think it would make it any easier. I'm not that makes it any easier. Thank you.
So I'll make the motion that we appoint Peter Church to the vacant position.
Okay.
I second it.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to appoint Peter Church to the, to a member of the library trustees to fill the vacancy through May 2014 annual town election. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Substantive?
I should have said aye. I was just watching to see what their mouth says.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you, Jean.
Congratulations.
All right, are we done?
You're done.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll move on to the annual town board appointment.
We can always increase it. No, thanks to town meeting vote.
All right. So we have, the next appointment we have is town board appointment with historical commission. We have one application for one term that's going to expire on June 2015. So Marina Diman? All right.
Marina used to work for us up on the third floor in the building commission after three years.
Yeah, yeah.
She's an application this week.
She moved over to the Foxborough Town Hall, which is where she works now.
All right, notes that the Board of Selectmen votes to appoint Marina Diman to a term on the historical, to a, sorry, to a two-and-a-half-year term on the historical commission expiring June 30th, 2015. One-and-a-half-year term, sorry.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right. Look at that. Joint meeting, but I think we should move on to.
I don't worry, we find a meeting here. I'm not sure if I rather.
We could take.
Are there six again?
Highway one. And the fire department.
Yeah.
We take, start with seven A.
All right, seven A. We're going to move on to.
Seven A?
Yeah, fire department, UHF radio systems upgrade. What's that?
He gets moved up.
Yeah, yeah. We can't move Jimmy up. He's got.
Yeah, Jim's got to stay for.
We can get one of his knocked off.
Well, Jim likes to stay late anyway.
Yeah.
He'll be here to wait.
Welcome.
We're looking to further, or actually, in the process of doing the radio upgrade. We have $120,000 for the current fiscal year that we're putting into it. And we were looking for matching for next year. However, at the same time, we have also applied for a radio grant, and it's not getting saved. Great, this is the third year that we've applied for it. And like we've heard so far, is that they're just about cotton money. So what we are looking for is to reallocate the $40,000 of matching funds at the fall town meeting to put it into, as an addition to the 120 that we currently have. That would allow us to just about finish our build-out for the entire radio system. Therefore, when we go for the next fiscal year, we may only need 20 to 30,000 instead of 120.
So tonight, you have a procurement, we have $120,000 in procurement to expend from right now, of which you're being presented with $114,000. But there's, in addition to the 120, there's already an additional $40,000 procurement. However, it earmarks the local match towards that FEMA grant that we applied for, for about $300,000.
Correct.
With Stowe in Foxborough. And we have not heard back yet on that. So tonight, we have $114,000 worth of procurements. Which is, $120,000 was approved by town meeting also. So this is more of a formality portion. And then we need to go back to town meeting for the balance that we may not get in the grant.
Yeah, my apologies, I kind of switched it around.
Right, tonight, it's a procurement. And in the future, we will be needing to obtain additional funding to complete the UHF radio project.
When will you get the answer on the grant?
We should have the answer by the end of August.
Okay, so before fall town meeting?
Yes.
Fall town meeting, okay.
I was just looking at the, sorry, the capital plan narrative. It's written, the highways and fire ground are the biggest impact for both firefighter and the public's safety in these situations. What is fire ground? What does that mean?
Fire ground is any situation where we're, if we're in a house fire or, you know, building fire, any large incident, that's the fire ground where we're working.
Oh, I see.
Working with our portable radios, trying to, you know, hit back to the dispatch center. On several occasions, especially recently, the system has been going down. And we aren't able to get back to dispatch. And, you know, if we are requesting mutual aid, you know, additional assistance, that's been a difficulty, you know, lately with some of the radio issues that we've been having.
It's not good.
Yeah.
Not at all. It's not good.
Okay.
All set?
All right, so notes that the Board of Selectmen votes to authorize the procurement of UHF radio equipment from Cyber Communications Sales in Cooper, Mass. in the following manner. $62,621.10 awarded under the state bid contract ITT 40. And $52,239.73 awarded under state bid contract FIR 03 for a total award price of $114,860.83.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks. Let's go to seven D. No, it's not. Was it last time? Seven D wasn't. Let's go to six B, because that's scheduling a.
Scheduling a public hearing.
So it looks like more good news this year. Seems as though since this is going to be our third full year of pay-to-throw, is that what it is? Fourth full, okay. Oh, regardless of that, all right. So whatever it is, since pay-to-throw has been implemented, there have been no fee changes. And there are no fee changes this year, no increases or anything like that. And so what we need to do is hold a public hearing to set the sticker and bag rates. Do you have anything to add? Any bets?
It's working pretty successfully, and most people seem to like it. Pretty nice that we can hold the prices again.
Yeah, I think it's very successful, looking at the numbers and looking at what I, what I expect other families to pay. And I think it's very successful compared to what we were paying a few years ago. I mean, I usually get away with maybe a couple hundred bucks a year, maybe a little bit more. And when we stopped, when we implemented pay-to-throw, it was $300, I think. And it was going about $25 to $40 every year, so we could be at 400 by now. So I think it's, I think it's an understatement that you said that you think it's going pretty well. The question I have is, are all the bags selling? Because I know when we talked about this on the pay-to-throw committee, you know, there were three sizes of bags. Are they all being used equally? That we should keep them all in use? Do you have any recommendation of that?
Five-gown bags don't sell very well.
But there's still a customer base that uses them?
Yeah, I mean, we still have a pretty good stockpile of them. It's not, it doesn't really hurt us.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, when we start getting close, maybe we could discontinue them, but there is still some people using them. They're not a big seller.
Yeah, well, okay, why don't we do that? And we'll track the inventory. When your inventory gets down to, you know, a two or three-month supply, if you can, triggering your thoughts to come down and see if we want to continue that bag, we can do it. Okay, thank you. I don't have anything else.
Move for the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Town Code Chapter 181 to schedule a public hearing from Monday, August 12, 2013, at 7:30 p.m. on the fee structure for use of the Littleton Transfer Station effective September 1, 2013, and to invite input from the General Public or Health and Pay-to-Throw Implementation Committee.
Motion's been made and seconded to schedule a public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Keith, can you let those other boards know that pay-to-throw implementation committee?
Sure will.
And Board of Health? All right.
We've got five of our seven, and the other two, I'm pretty certain one's not coming. So I, if you guys want to keep going, I think we could probably come up and, you know, keep you on schedule or ahead of schedule.
Yeah.
I'll leave you there, you know, if I hold up.
Yeah, okay, I don't see anything else either, so.
Oh, this is Chris. We get six out of seven, and the other one's not likely to come, so.
Okay, okay, so this is a joint meeting between FinCon and the Board of Selectmen? And would you like to open your session?
Sure, yeah. First off, you know, looking over the list, I think it probably is unfortunate that, you know, we always seem to put as topics the items that we, you know, quibble over, and I don't want to lose sight from the get-go. In fact, we're coming from a real good place in terms of both the town's finances and the relationships between the boards and the boards and our, you know, our appointed staff and all that. So don't lose sight of that as we get into little areas where we think we can improve. So first off, you know, we do think that it's important to bring up the topic of either board communications. Partly, I think this was an unanticipated byproduct of the fact that last year's budget process reforms consolidated a lot of the hearings into one night. So consequently, without anybody really consciously doing it, our two boards haven't met collectively since January. Had there been big problems, we would have, no doubt. But that doesn't mean we don't have topics of an ongoing nature or of a far-sight nature in terms of planning ahead and addressing structural issues, the financial policies, et cetera. So I think we want to, you know, part of that topic is trying to figure out a way to keep those lines of communications more current. You know, part of our, you know, just to get beyond that part, and part of our impetus in putting this before the board is, I think sometimes topics come before the selectmen that we would like to be aware of in advance, because they do have a financial consideration to them. And that isn't always the case. I know it's not always possible to anticipate that. But, you know, if there's a way we can address some of that structurally, either, you know, scheduling periodic meetings, chair-to-chair meetings, whatever it is, there's, you know, I think we need to improve that somehow.
Well, I don't want to tell you this, but as you know, we, you and I have a direct line communication. We speak every so often, and I think that's healthy to have the chairs talk. And, you know, as we go into the budget or anything else, you know, you know, school committee, you know, we can have, you know, any type of conversation, get the thoughts across. Or if you find any type of impediment to communications, we should be talking, you know, chair-to-chair or, you know, or any other board, whoever you feel comfortable talking to. I think over the last few years, having not been involved when it was really bad, but I think the communication really has improved over the last several years. And I really want to see that continue. And I think, you know, if there's anything, always wrap in the chair if you feel you want to send a communication to anybody or vice chair, or like I said, anybody else. And any email as you want, you know, go ahead and copy anybody. And if you feel you're not getting the response, you want it, you know, just please follow up. I don't mean to push your problem that you mentioned back on you, but let's all work together and keep it going.
Okay. Well, I'd invite any of the other colleagues to add to that. But before I do, I do want to acknowledge that we were happy to be joined by two members of the school committee. We did make sure the school committee was synced into this as well. Because in truth, the overall good relations have been tripartite, you know, involving the schools, finance committee, and selectmen. But as far as the communications go, I don't know if any of the members wanted to address that or would just take it as maybe a reminder from us to you folks that if items come up that have spending or financial implications, would appreciate, you know, having knowledge before they're addressed. I can't provide one specific example, I'm not going to get bogged down in a list that I didn't come prepared for, wasn't looking to do that. But the, you know, it's very, very, obviously, when the auditor's recommendations came in, and your board was, in receipt of them, had recommendations on how to address them and voted them before we were aware of that. And I think we've already covered that ground, but that's the sort of thing that, you know, obviously, we ought to, we would like to be on the loop and, you know, and want to be.
Should, would it be better if we just had the practice of having that brought to a joint meeting? I mean, you talked about a joint meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
It would seem like that's the primo example of something that we could certainly do that.
And we did, we did meet with Keith probably about a month and a half ago and hashed over this specific item. But, yeah, I think exactly that, Keith. On something like the auditor's recommendations, that's a level where pretty, almost definitionally, we both need to be involved.
Yeah, and I think it would be absolutely fair for us to say that topic is something that we should set aside and say that we will have it as the subject of the joint meeting.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And we've thought of the idea of during budget season from like, you know, January to May, just sort of automatically scheduling, you know, a once-a-month joint meeting. And if we needed it, great, it was there and it would be in our mind. And if we didn't, we cancel it and each get, you know, half an hour free on a given evening.
I'd say it would be easier for us if you picked Mondays, then.
We can do that.
We can tell you when we'll have, you know, and, you know, like, we're scheduling 45 minutes tonight, that we could block out time on, you know, the Monday night meetings and have it as the, you know, joint meeting time.
That's part of the, maybe structurally putting some of that in in advance isn't such a bad idea. Because just trying to get this meeting scheduled, as you know, it's taking over a month, so.
Right, and what we might want to do, we know that certain things come up at certain times of year. So maybe just take a little care now to look at what does that calendar look like? When do we think we're going to have an auditor's report? Plug it in to our calendars and then just be aware. As one example, there'll be other things, you know, to, sure, get into it with the budgeting. A very successful day-long joint boards meeting was great, good use of time.
My only, Mr. Chair, my only concern with the automatic scheduling is folks tend to come to our meeting when their, you know, item is up. So if we set aside a half-hour, 45 minutes, and we come in and say, all's good, see you later, it kind of throws our agenda off. So, I mean, if we get our agendas a couple days prior to posting, maybe that's the time we can at least forward it off to the chair or any vice chair to say, yeah, we're in this.
And maybe, as Keith suggested, too, to make it a little more structured than just having time allotted, but consciously putting time along with a set purpose for it, and then we're not losing either.
At least kind of the details that we can work out. We don't want to get bogged down. We got a few items here, but I think there's a lot of good things coming up. But I think we want to.
If you want, I'll continue just to kind of roll.
Yeah, I mean.
Relatively related, so it shouldn't take a whole lot of time.
Well, I think, you know, I thought you were going to segue right into collective bargaining. Because that seemed to be a communication play where you felt there was a miscommunication where the board wasn't keeping you informed of collective bargaining.
Yeah, as you'll recall, and by the way, this is our first meeting since Selectman Bronson has joined us, so we congratulate you. Look forward to working with you. But last fall, when the, our joint boards met, this same issue came up. And the simple point we wanted to make was that, you know, we're in full recognition of the collective bargaining, the bargaining responsibilities of the elected boards, selectmen, school committee. But when there is an impact on finances, all we're looking for is the opportunity that our, you know, we have a designated, in this case, it's, or at the moment, it's Frank Falcone, to be in the loop for paperwork and have the opportunity to be at meetings, maybe not the bargaining sessions themselves. So that if there is a financial analysis that needs to occur before a decision's made, it's, you know, that's the appropriate time for involvement, not after something's been negotiated and decided. And that seemed to be agreed to last year. But I know there's been a few items that have come up in the past couple of months. Frankly, we've seen about them, we've learned about them in the report after the selectman meeting. You know, nothing earth-shattering, but it's good practice to keep that current.
Okay.
I don't know if anyone else wants to address it.
No, I think it's definitely a way to, you know, helpful to have that response after we can, once we can release confidential things to you, if there's anything like that. It would be helpful to have that analysis. I don't, like you said, I don't think it's. I don't, like you said, I don't think it's, you know, necessary to have them at the table, but, you know.
The other part of that was, and I'll certainly take my share for not, I mean, I'll tell you when we, when we're so happy to, you talked about scheduling meetings, when we actually get a meeting and we're able to resolve an issue with the union on some impact bargaining matters that will, you know, invariably dash right here, but we've had a number of, since, well, back up, back in November, we had three rounds of bargaining, actually four rounds of bargaining, of which three were successful, to essentially come up with the same deal, and I think that, I think that we kept you in the loop about what the parameters of that, of what the, of what those deals were, because they had actually gone back even to prior meetings that we'd had jointly with the School Committee and Selectmen and FinCom and sort of looking at what overall goals were, where maybe it's fallen down, I'll certainly take.
The more recent potential new benefits.
Yeah, when we had some single items, single-issue items, like the, all of a sudden there was a request to deal with a veterans, a, not veterans, but military service benefit, and we did that directly with one union, did it quickly and brought it here quickly, and that we omitted the step of involving, or at a strategy level of having a discussion that we couldn't include Fred on, so we'll be careful about that. We are hopefully going to be in a position to bring a fourth contract forward soon, and when, I've sent a confidential update on that today, but when we do that and have the briefing, we'll make sure that Fred is there as well.
And that's basically it, Keith. That was the, that's the key.
Yeah, there were three other contracts that we voted on, which, which were consolidations of prior.
And the, with the.
Yeah, that, I guess we viewed those almost as mechanical, that there were substantive changes.
Right.
But there was a lot of activity of police dispatch and fire contract, where we get agreed in November to bring back consolidations that incorporated all of the separate memorandums of agreement and fire contracts in one codified document. We did have those three, which we brought directly to the board, but, and we also implemented the 20, the around-the-block ship with the Fire Department as well to have the funding. So we will make sure, and I'll make sure that we're including the FinCom rep in the, with the opportunity for our executive session discussions here when we talk about them, so.
Go ahead.
Chairman, lady, do you have currently with the School Committee a relationship where they come to you with respect to the bargaining with the unions that they contract with?
We have, yeah, we're dealing with the, whatever, three-year cycle contract. We get updates on a regular basis, and I'm not aware of any of specific changes such as, you know, the Selectmen we're dealing with within the past month or two with the schools, so, you know, I can't say that we've had a recent update on that, but I'm not aware of something that's happened that we would, you know, we would want to have an update on, but I think.
PJ, you keep this in the loop.
Yes, sir. We are right now. Just to be clear, we're in the middle of a three-year contract. August 31st next year is when this current contract will expire. It wouldn't be until about September, so this year, either the LEA or we, because either party can make the first announcement that we'd like to enter negotiations, at this point, neither party has made that offer yet.
Thanks. The next one that we have here for discussion is the savings for refund debt, and this comes out of the debt that we recently financed, you know, our Steve Anoudi looked, had some foresight and refinanced some debt, and it sounds like you're suggesting to, let's try to find an agreeable way, agree on a way to.
I think it's really more basic than that, Mr. Chairman, than that we, as you correctly pointed out, the Treasurer did a great job, dispatched one, the whole finance team does a terrific job on an ongoing basis. That's been borne out by every independent body that's voiced an opinion on it, but in this case, there was a, you know, a savings based on what the, you know, the town appropriated through the renegotiation of the debt, and we're mostly here to play our curmudgeonly role as the finance committee to remind everybody in the process that there is a process and a policy in place for handling that, you know, that money. It isn't like, oop, hey, we've got free money to spend.
Right.
Not the way it works, so, you know, they projected the period of time, I think it's like $200,000 a year for 10 years, that, you know, we need to apply our financial policies to getting back into the system, you know, and there's, and I'll let others speak to, you know, the mechanics of that.
Well, let's, don't get into the details now, but let's schedule a time that, I mean, we can, where you guys can meet a couple times, come up with the real value, the real amounts, and come up with, you know, your thoughts, recommendations, or, you know, bring the, I mean, we're, you know, pretty aware of the policy, won't be too surprised to anybody, but I think that, you know, bring it to us, explain how, what can be done with the policy, because the policy isn't as rigid as it may sound, so there may be some places, so, I don't know if you want to put on the, on an upcoming meeting, schedule it now.
Well, let me just suggest this, now, Bonnie's not here tonight, but in, you know, in large measure, this, I think, before others started to come up with ideas of how to address it, which would be outside of our policy, the policy would primarily, you know, call from the Finance Director to present it as, I guess, a close relative to free cash, is that the closest?
Yeah, be careful though, that's.
Second cousin.
Second cousin, but not as, but not as.
But only if it rolls forward until it's re-appropriated, but I think, you know, maybe a modification that you just suggested, rather than we scheduling time together to sit and rediscover that topic, is, I think we'd probably, we'd look for Bonnie's guidance and, you know, memo form on how best to, and Steve, the Treasurer, to, you know, to properly get that addressed within the confines of our financial policies.
Right, and I just don't want to fall off the table, so.
No.
I'm going to, I'm going to put it down for, I don't know, second meeting in October, is that?
Yeah, I mean, I know we'll be meeting again, we anticipate meeting again in September with you folks, once the budget season kicks off, and if you want, I can continue to roll through the.
Well, I want to know about a date, I'm sorry. I don't want to fall off the table, so you want to do this September 30th?
Sure.
For you.
Second meeting in September.
Yeah, yeah, so joint meeting with FinCom and.
And we'll have a couple of topics then. We'll have the beginning of the budget process, certainly, we'll have more complete financial policies update probably by that point, I can give you a verbal update tonight, but, and then also we can deal with this topic.
And I'm not looking for an answer, I'm not looking for a solution, I just want, I don't want this.
Special town meeting, too.
Yeah, and I don't want to fall off the table.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that very much.
Can we just want to say, just for anyone who's listening, this isn't sort of special money, I mean, anytime money appears, you get a line of people saying, "Oh, I have a good way to spend it," and we have a, we have a procedure, and we, you know, we will hopefully follow the procedure and vet any spending of extra money, you know, as we would anything else.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think I agree. Yeah, okay.
Fall special town meeting, you know, our understanding, there are a couple of topics that have spending implications, one is the sewer study, but also the Littleton 300, some of those costs, I know from where different had as one of the subcommittee members there, we, you know, we've been asked to generate some costs, and, you know, I, I guess we're looking for updates from the board of what your intentions were toward the fall special warrant articles, especially those that involve any spending or financial implications, because that's, to this point, our understanding of it.
Are you looking for answers on those now, or?
No, I mean, to the extent you have them, but is there anything else we should know?
Well, just a running tally, and I think we shared with you the draft warrant that I had prepared, which has, it's our hope that we will be able to fund a collective bargaining agreement for highway.
Okay.
And if we do, then we'll bring that forward to a, to a vote. There will be some budget adjustment articles or line item transfers reflecting whatever the final version of the state budget looks like once they stop beating each other up on, if you can help. An appropriation for the 300th Committee, we don't know what the dollar amount of the request is, but I think Bonnie has in mind how much she might be able to make available, but we want to, I think we want to make them ask for a number.
I'll pass that on.
Don't want to bid against ourselves.
And as far as sewer, I believe that the Sewer Committee plans on bringing, having a warrant article on the fall special.
With the central borrowing.
The 558, yeah, that's, I think that's a number that you carry right now.
Okay, well, we're mindful that this, you know, fall's approaching, it's how does it end, so.
And what Bonnie had wanted to do and to take the board through is to just do a quick cut of what does the capital improvement plan situation look like for all of next year, because part of it is a decision of which of many projects that will be going forward otherwise next May, which of those, if any, should be brought forward to a fall town meeting and why, that there are some, you know, building repairs in this building that may need to be brought, that we're just starting to get reports now from the facility assessment study that we commissioned and that ENDC is doing, there are some, there are some things coming out of that that may bubble up to the top of where money should be spent on the building. We have a figure of about $578,000 identified for the design, costs for the fire station improvements, haven't made, haven't discussed or made a policy decision about whether that comes forward at the very next town meeting or as part of the annual. I think there's general agreement to go for a enterprise fund for Park and Rock as the auditor's.
One of the updates, by the way.
Yeah, and what the main reason is, the advantage of taking that vote at the special town meeting in November is, then you'll know when you submit a budget in the spring for the May town meeting, whether you put it in as an enterprise fund or an operating bunch. The year that we decided to do away with the ambulance enterprise fund, we didn't know what the answer was, so we put both articles, and the May town meeting had them both as an enterprise and as an operating budget, and we took it out as an enterprise and then adopted it as an operating, so.
So speaking of calendars and budgets, do we want to set a date for fall special town meeting today? We basically have two options, we have, we're basically going to have a couple extra minutes, or I'd like to hear from the FinComs, what they think about the two days. I think it's really just logistics and approaching holiday and things like that, so I don't know, but, I mean, I'm all for setting it now and that we know where the deadlines are.
I'd offer a couple of things. One is that you will need to take that vote in September, but, no later than September, point one, so if you, if there's any hesitation about doing it tonight, you've got time to wait. With respect to the options that are put out there, there are, you don't want to have it Thanksgiving, we're looking at November, you don't want to have it Thanksgiving week, the 11th is a Monday, so you want to avoid Veterans Day, so we're looking at the 4th and the 18th as potential dates. I have to say, I recommend a later date because it gives us more time to work on the warrant, especially where we agree that we need 40, that we're going to give ourselves 45 days prior to the town meeting rather than 30, so that we, in the past, we've done fall special town meetings on 30-day notice, and it just has done enough advanced time to be able to work.
The only thing I'll offer, I haven't discussed a date of special town meeting and having any significance to us, although from the date you were mentioning, Keith, there's one significant intersection there that I think we want to be mindful, and that's, it is a segue to our next item, the budget calendar. One thing that we had talked with Bonnie about is, as much as we enjoyed that one-day session last year, the fact that it happened on the Saturday after Thanksgiving, we were in virtual, actual conflict with the Christmas holiday bazaar, but we were, you know, people's mindsets were in a million different places other than town finances, so we were hoping, and Bonnie thinks with, you know, with the advanced warning this year, that she would be able to do it before Thanksgiving. Now, it sounds like there's both of these dates are going to be close to each other either way.
Either way, November 4, if it ended up being November 4th for town meeting, the earlier date, that simply means we have less time to prepare, which would, frankly, it wouldn't impact the finances, financial projects we're bringing forward as much as it might if there are zoning amendments that are being proposed, because they're, because that has another window.
Well, Brian reminds you that the specific date that we had, that we had talked about with Bonnie as a potential date for the all budgets review is the 16th.
Yeah.
So if you were to have it on the 18th, it wouldn't be so much a burden on us, except that, you know, everybody's preparing for one meeting, one preparing for the other.
Yeah, that's, that would not be a reasonable assignment for staff, for Bonnie, to have a, to be preparing for next year's budget on Saturday and still hoping with this year's budget on Monday, that's not, that won't, that won't work, so I think maybe what we want to do is still look at some, and I know Bonnie prefers the earlier date of November 4th, because you, because then we can schedule the tax rate recap hearing for the 18th, which is a, so.
So on the 4th, it looks like we'd have to close the warrant right around September the 13th, Friday the 13th.
Right.
Well, you know, you would close, yeah, the warrant would close, the warrant would close on the 20th.
Oh, would.
Yeah, yeah, we would.
So we hold it accountable, are you?
We'd have to, we'd have to exert articles on the warrant on September 16th, and the warrant would close on Friday the 20th of September. That's certainly.
I mean, if we know now, if we set the date now, rather than 30 days from now, we should be.
You know, and the fact that Bonnie's not here tonight won't matter, because she will be delighted to know that it's November 4th, so.
We should do it delights, Bonnie.
Whatever possible.
Now, is that too, too quick a turnaround, going from the 4th to the 16th for?
No.
I don't think so.
No, no, and, you know, we can, we can back that up maybe even into August. I mean, if we know now that it's going to be November 4th, then we can make sure that you are reviewing potential articles in late August.
Yeah, I know, I think it's a good idea to get that.
Yeah, so we can do that.
All right, so we'll set it for the 4th?
Yeah.
Okay.
And why are you doing that, Mr. Chairman? Just the, we've already had a dialogue with Bonnie about setting the budget calendar, and we tentatively scheduled a FinCom meeting on the 6th of August, she's going to be coming in, and in advance of that, she and I are going to be trying to, you know, put together a prospective calendar, so obviously this information is very important to that. We haven't talked about doing anything dramatically different from last year, although I think we hope that is, that we would see even more detail from the Selectmen, part of what we thought was substantively an important part of the process last year should always be, is getting your priorities as a board incorporated into the budget process early. What we get from department heads are, you know, line items, and a lot of times it's reflective of, you know, current expenses projected forward, if there are new initiatives or changes in emphasis of priority that you folks want to see implemented, the best part, best time to do that is before people start locking into specific line item budget proposals, so we'll, we'll make that ask of you guys again to get in your input, and that's part of what we'd be looking to meet when we meet in September. Before that, we will hopefully have already done the spade work for getting the process off the ground with scheduling and also alerting departments as to how the process is going to work.
So you want our priorities before we have a joint meeting in September?
Ideally, yes.
To start?
I think we were, we began the dialogue along those lines last year around that time, and I think, you know, you guys had a lot of other competing topics, so it came a little bit later in the process, but since we know, you know, we might as well ask now.
Okay.
We found also last year, I think this has probably been historically true for a while, that, you know, a lot of the information that used to come in late in the cycle that forced budgets to be developed much later, you know, just it can be ascertained a lot earlier, so I'm a department, welcome to contradict me if they want, I think there might be one or two of them back there, but I don't think it's all that hard for department heads to come up with their requests in the fall as opposed to, you know, in the winter, so, you know, if we're, if we're looking at requests in November, we're able to get rid of all but the most thorny issues by January, that, you know, that goes along with our theory of trying to repress.
The days are longer in the fall.
Yeah, what we bought ourselves last year was time of dealing with, you know, what we thought may be an inevitable problem that less than we never occurred, so whether that was a result of the process we all engaged in or whether we just got lucky, who cares? It worked, and, you know, we want to do more of it.
All right, sounds good. Next.
Yeah, financial policies update, I can be as brief as I can be about anything on this, I guess we, we are making progress.
Hey, I got to stop on somebody, it's not between you and Keith, who's longer, so, you know, I got to.
Or who's funny.
Oh, yeah, there you go. And as you well know, Selectmen Carr has been working with our financial policy subgroup, which myself, Chris Henkley, Vice Chair, the FinCom, Mike Fontenelle from School Committee, as well as the finance team, you know, that works for the town, have been working, Keith, Bonnie, Steve Anoudi, you know, very sensitively on, and first of all, we've already got language in there that addresses the new capital stabilization fund that was created at town meeting. that addresses the new capital stabilization fund that was created at town meeting. As was promised, we needed language to deal with how to operate it. There were also some updates that staff noticed that were incorporated. There's some new language that in a draft form, Bonnie and Steve are recommending dealing with some tax policy stuff, which frankly, we haven't discussed internally yet. And then there's a number of other topics and financial items that are all on the list that we provided when we discussed launching it, that we have yet to come up with new language for, although we are pursuing it through towns that have already received recognition for having, you know, sound financial policies. The last point I'll put on that topic is, you know, our goal, Bonnie's identified goal, Finance Committee supports, is to move the town in the direction of getting GFOA Gold Star approval. That's the Government Financial Organizations Association, so, Government Financial Officers Association. Is that right, Keith? Do I get that right?
Pretty close.
Pretty close.
Not yet.
Yeah, so, we've just found that the, you know, the financial policies we have in place, lo and behold, are serving us well, and they're recognized as such. But there's a number of areas where we don't have specific policies in place, and we're working on that. We'll probably have a much more detailed proposal to share with the board for that September meeting.
Okay. All right, last item on your list, here, I believe? So, from, yeah, from what I understand, you're having a, you have no one assigned to you, which, when we, you and I spoke about this today, and I was, I had just assumed that you had administrative staff from the finance department.
No, it is, you know, it's somewhat understandable. Our, we're, our report is different. We report to town meetings, so we don't have a department that works for us. Fighting Wood, you know, Water Health, you name it, a lot of those folks have dedicated staff. We work with the finance department, but they're your reports, and they're very helpful. And this is not a criticism of them, but it's not their job, or it isn't expressed anywhere, that it's their job to serve us. And, you know, I think there are probably, there are three areas where right now we either are experiencing or foresee a problem. One is in the very basic function of minutes. For years, prior to my service and during my first years on the board, we had Bob Morse doing the minutes for the board and part of the senior work, terrific. And, you know, the woman we have working with us now, Marilyn, is terrific too, except that, like a lot of people, her schedule doesn't always allow her to be able to be there. She's in China right now, I think, God bless her. But we don't have a set mechanism in place to get coverage for even doing the simple function of minutes at a meeting. And I, if Chris Hankley speaks to anything tonight, I'm sure he'll speak to this concern. We usually pick Chris up to do the minutes for our board. Beyond that, scheduling of meetings, tracking down data, you know, we chase Bonnie for that, and she's terrific. When she can be terrific, and sometimes rightly so, her priorities are elsewhere. So, I think we're looking, without a specific ask in mind, we're looking for administrative help in some form. And I don't think we've ever said that we want a new body or a new, you know, head kind of person. That's not what we're looking for, but we're looking for a problem to be addressed.
So, from what I hear, it's not a lot. It's a few hours a week, maybe, maybe a couple more, the weeks you have your meetings. And, you know, I think some of it is a pretty important role as far as making sure your meetings are posted and that you have a mechanism to efficiently post them so that someone's not running down there, you know, 48 and a half hours before your meeting trying to get something through the town clerk.
That's the, you know, that's, that's, sometimes it's something very mundane. And I don't mind calling Bonnie up on a substantive issue, but I hate to have her time being spent on, you know, clerical.
Keith, we do the, somebody doing minutes, somebody's actually going to be here.
Right, and that you can rely on, because I know, I've been on committees where Marilyn's been there too, or you've had other seniors in the work program, and they just, something comes up and you find out, you know, and I'm not blaming anybody. You find out, you know, the day of your meeting or the day before your meeting, and it's hard to shuffle against them around. So, I think, are you looking to have dedicated staff or dedicated somebody?
We would like to have perhaps a staff member that's working in the town, that's not working full-time, but is looking for additional hours.
Well, we, yeah, well, we, let's look at Keith.
Who have their reserve fund transferred?
No, well, there's, there's
For operating expenses?
Well, I mean, there's two, there's two staff in the finance, and I know, you know, Jen helps out on boards, and I think we have people. So, I don't know, Keith, can you come up with some sort of plan, not now, but in a couple of weeks?
Yeah, I think we can come up with a plan to try to address it. Right now, I have to say that my office provides the, does not provide minutes, but we provide all the other staff support for those boards that don't have staff. So that if it's a matter of posting meetings, getting the minutes up that someone else does uploaded, and doing that clerical administrative support stuff, Jen does that for a whole long list of boards right now. Frankly, I don't think it would be a lot of heavy lifting. I'm volunteering Jen's time. To be able to be that part of it, from what I'm hearing, that's the easy, that's the easy part. I mean, we've got that down mechanically. We now post an agenda, we know how to get that stuff done. The minute-taking part is going to be the more problematic, and I'd be glad to try to reach a solution that works for, works for the chair.
And I think you also mentioned to someone, hey, I'd like to get my hands on this report, or can you pull some hard copies, something like that? So, if you could somehow come up with
I spend half my day doing that.
If you could just come up
If you were to designate me, fine, Keith, that would be all right.
Just include me on the email, I mean, because what I get to do, I can forward it off to the whole staff, and someone's got it. So, it's not that I have to find it, I just have to forward it.
Do you think you can do a paragraph and say what your, specifically what your needs are? And get that to Keith, and then we'll
Alan knows what a job description looks like.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think we want to go with job description, because job description means new position.
There's, you know, we're also looking, part of our, you know, our new approach to things that we addressed, began to address last year incorporates trying to get more information to the public in meaningful ways to them. And our missing member tonight, Peter Vilkins, took on the task of making our website page at the town's website much more useful and structured. We haven't tooted the horn on that yet because we're really not done with it to the point where we're satisfied. But we, what we would like to get is having what, you know, in other places is called the open checkbook. And it's just basically taking as many of the town's financial functions as possible that are, that are not secret. Anybody can come down and request information, but getting them online real time so that the citizens can have the maximum level of transparency. Now, that is an administrative chore, getting it done initially and then keeping it updated as it goes forward. So, while we have board members who want to participate in that, that's an area, a new area where we're going to need, you know, whoever that's administrative person is or whatever administrative arrangement is created, we're going to need to, you know, accommodate that as well.
So, it's called open checkbook, not to be, not to be confused with blank check.
Right, right. We don't have that.
And that sounds like it's part of what a broader initiative is. It's actually one of the board's goals for getting more information out. But also, we are planning to do an operator of the town website where the functionality that is available for staff, quick stop, box, and for the public to be able to find it or subscribe to it. We think we're going to be able to make some strides in the next year, and that it'll be important to involve the boards and departments.
Well, we'd very much be a part of that.
Okay.
One, just actually, a question to you, Paul. Do you talk about, at some point in the process, if you wanted to review some line items for the budget, you know, changing some items, rejiggering, consolidating? Just want to raise that as, I mean, as we fine-tune the process, you know, there are times when we say, gee, it'd be a lot easier if we had a specific line item for this group. Is that, when are we kind of?
I would say, you know, there are a number of topics we actually could talk. The list you've got is actually a lot shorter than what we went over with Bonnie last week. And, you know, Brian's absolutely right, but I just didn't anticipate we would get into that in detail tonight. But there's details of structural budget changes that we'd like to get in with you too.
Okay.
So, just, just whenever the
Probably September, you know, when we're, when we're doing the relaunch of the FY
2015.
14 budget.
Correct, but just not so, but before it gets too late for the next cycle.
Right.
Yes. Oh, I see, right, because it's not going to fit in this year, right, all right. So, we've got you scheduled for September 30th?
Perfect. We'll locate between now and then.
Yeah, right, right, but the things we're looking at was the budget, the refund, the refunded funds, and then the fall special town meeting, and then anything else, yeah.
Do you have any questions of us? We appreciate, I'll speak on behalf of the board, we appreciate the time you've given us.
Yeah, I know, we've got some time to kill. You know, I was, we've got to go to PJ. PJ can talk 10 minutes, like, nothing, so.
If we need to fill the time, we're going to have
Well, just show that once again, we're on the budget. Do you have any, is there any others?
Now, do you want to put one to make, what Paul pulled up right at the very beginning? In this whole discussion, we're talking about improvements that have been made. But, you know, once again, I was talking about my goals, let the public know the state that we're in, and do the hard work of our finance department and the, and the school committee and the finance committee. We are in a pretty decent position as opposed to a town. So, we're heading in the right direction. And you said that right at the beginning, and I just want to reemphasize that. And I'll tell you, you heard a lot of ideas come up, and I don't want people to have any idea that we're in trouble right now because we're ahead of time, you've scheduled things. It worked out fine last year, is what I'm trying to say, I guess.
Worked out fine last year, but I'll just remind everybody of the last line or last paragraph in our finance report. And that is, as well as things have gone this year, there are two statistical projections that don't bode well. One is that our growth rate in revenues is surpassed by the growth rate in basic employee costs. You know, and that's not a slur on employees, it's more a, should be a call to action on us on the revenue front. The second one is related, and that is that our new, new growth revenue is
Flatlined.
Yeah, even with, you know, the, the big projects that we, even incorporating those into, you know, into the projection stream. So, a consensus effort on addressing future revenues is in order.
So, it's a great thing that we work, sorry, so it's a great thing we work together so well, because we're going to need to.
Right.
Right.
All right. You know, PJ, we got time? Anything to add? Let the record reflect that PJ was, had nothing to say. All right?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, they may not be here yet, right, yeah.
Yeah, you could do 7B.
7B.
Thank you. Well, actually, I'd be up to it. So, at our last meeting, we discussed how the special municipal employee designation that has been used in the past could be used for park and rec and the recommendation, well, not the recommendation, but that's the one process. Because we have people on park and rec, Patrolman Corey is on park and rec and Officer
Right, yeah, just to, just to recap, the motion tonight is actually a little fine-tuned from last, the last meeting. Last time, we were proposing that all of these listed here be special municipal employees, park and rec, and the on-call fire, police. In reviewing it with town council, we're splitting those out. Only park and rec is proposed to be a special municipal employee tonight. And it's a procedure for your granting exemptions to certifications for specific employees for, for police and fire that would be the second vote. We can take those one by one, but just on the special municipal employee, we're dealing with a situation which is, which, for which there's, there are, there's, either you vote to declare that the park and rec commission is a special municipal employee or you don't. And the affected individual will have to govern themselves based on what you do or don't vote. If you vote that it is not a special municipal employee, then the individual will have to decide whether he wants to retain his, his elected office on the park and rec commission or his compensated employment with the police department, because he could not do both unless you declare the park and rec job as a special municipal employee. At least twice before you've had that issue in front of you and you solved it in favor of, of the committee, allowing the committee service. Bill Cole was elected to the Board of Health. Pam Campbell is on the Board of Assessors. Both of them are also full-time employees. So, actually, you voted to, in the case of Bill, I think it was four or five committees that he, that you put him on, or four that you put him on and one the voters put him on. And you had voted to declare each of those a special municipal employees, therefore allowing him to continue to serve on those committees. Had you not done that, he would have had the option of keeping his paid job or serving on those committees. He couldn't, couldn't do both. And the way the law is written, you've got exactly that option now. That no one, in the case of the elected officials, no one asks our permission before they run for office. They're not required to. However, there is a consequence after the fact that you have, that Board of Selectmen has to deal with because the prohibitions against dual service don't allow them to be on the committee and a full-time paid employee unless they're designated as special municipal employees.
Well, I think Bill Cole is a perfect example because he's a dedicated resident and a town employee. So, I think it's, you know, he's a lead by example, and I think we should do nothing to prohibit anybody from, you know, to serve on the committee as long as there's no serious conflict interest.
I think, I think just to echo your, your sentiment, but not only to have somebody step up and be able to put the time in, volunteer their time, and be willing to put up with everything that comes along with being on committees and being elected and everything else, you know? If they're willing to do it, I don't see why we shouldn't say yes.
There's nothing to determine, I do, right? We don't think it's an impediment. Anybody else agree?
Yeah, I feel a little bit differently about it. In looking at the calendar of when this has been done, there were seven times, this would be the eighth in a year's timeline, where there have been these designations made for special municipal employees. Prior to that, the other two were, one was in 2002 and one in 2006. So, to my eyes, it almost looks as though in the last year that this board has said, well, we'll make an exception here and here and here and here and here and here. And it begins to have sort of a flavor of when our president makes executive orders sort of outside of what, you know, Congress would deem an appropriate use of power. So, my feeling about it is that this is, this is not a trend that I think we should be heading toward as a town.
Can you speak to that? I think what happened there, wasn't it that we just I can explain that, why there was so little activity prior to a year ago. And frankly, it's because it had existed and nothing was ever done about it. That the conflicts of law had existed, nothing had been done about it. And the way that we did it, rather than pick on any one person, we went through systematically with, with our town attorneys and went through every file, every information that we have about what, what board is someone on, go through the whole roster of town employees and match them up against the town clerk's records of who's on what boards. Because in some cases, we're not aware of them, or if they're, if they're contractor and they're not on the payroll system, then maybe we wouldn't see the match. So, the list that we've come up with prior to tonight has been the list of, of, the fruits of that comprehensive labor. And it just took a series of votes for us to be able to do it. Prior to that, did we have town employees who were serving on town boards at the same time? You bet. And, I mean, in some communities, there, you know, Boards of Selectmen just make the blanket vote that all members of all boards are special municipal employees. And I know that has not been the case here, so we, so we haven't brought that to you. We've looked specifically at where is there a conflict? Where do we actually have, none of these are hypotheticals. We're just dealing with, here's an employee, in many cases, that this board has voted to put on a committee. When in fact, had we said timeout, wait, you can't do that, and let, you know, yes, we want to have our town, you know, good people on the town committees, but it just, but because they're also town employees, there's this additional step we have to take. And that's sort of where we are now with, with this one. And as I say, there's no preclearance. We're not, you know, we, for those who are running for office, who happen to be town employees, they're not stopping by here first to ask for, you know, for permission to, to, to serve on both if they get elected. But we are, but we have the situation to deal with afterwards, and we're aware of it, and it's a conflict.
I, I think, I'd like to just comment on, you know, the ability for us as a board to say, you know, all our committees are special town employees, so that there may be good folks out there that work for the town that may come forward if they know that in fact in fact they're, they're not running into this issue.
Yeah, because I'd hate to think at, at any point that we would take people who have interest, time, they want to put into the town and help us out, that we would discourage it by not allowing them to be special municipal employees, and I, I don't understand what would be the problem in doing that. There's nothing, I mean, they still have to go by the town ethics, they still have to remove themselves at times when, when, when a conflict might come up. And I, I think of what, even in the park and rec, why would you want to take someone who just got voted in and say, no, you can't do it? Or, or put her under pressure. So I think it's, it's a wise thing for us to do at the time, it might be the time to make all, everybody, especially
I mean, I don't know whether or not we can do it in this motion here or bring another motion back to have a discussion with the entire board there on, but for tonight, to deal with this issue.
I would do this one and then have a discussion.
So, your motion, rebuttal?
It's not so much a rebuttal, it's just in looking at the timeframe, to me, it looks as though we're, we're doing things for people personally rather than having, as you're suggesting, a policy, right? Oh, we see there was a conflict with, with Bill.
That's, that's exactly correct, because there has not been a directive to say, go ahead and make them all, because it's easily cured in one vote, to say all appointed and elected boards of the town are special municipal employees.
Sure.
And, I worked for a town where that was the case, and, and, but that specifically has not been the desire here. So, we took that, so we took that direction and, and we, you know, we heard the hesitancy about any blanket votes that, that, that applied to all, so we went through and methodically looked at where, well, where are the conflicts that exist?
And that's why I get the originalizing.
Those are the ones that are here.
Right, no, I understand that so
That's why it's a, it's a short list of committees, and it's only the ones where the actual conflict exists.
Sure, no, and I, I understand that now that you've explained that to me. What was the reluctance then to have a townwide policy with respect to boards and committees interfacing with town employees? What was
I don't, I don't remember that. I think we just never really touched on it. We may kind of put this Band-Aid on it, and I don't, I don't recall reluctance, but
I don't, I don't think
I mean, what's the difference? We're going to give it, we've given it, if we're going to give it to everybody as they come in, why not make it a policy?
Right.
And we can look, go ahead and say.
I, I, you know, as long as I've been on the board, this is, you know, this is the way it's been handled, so I don't think that the discussion of, let's just do a policy change and make that vote has ever come up before this, so, I mean, I think that that's a good way to go, we should definitely agenda it and talk about it and make a decision.
Want to put that on the 19th?
And I, I just, I like the appearance better of, it's not this one person who's now asking for this one designation relative to that board or committee. I would prefer a policy townwide that says it's open for everyone rather than it seemingly being, well, this one was because of Bill Cole, and this one was because of my Corey. And I like the idea of a policy rather than backfilling it.
Let's look at that. Special municipal employee for all boards and committees, policy? What are they, 19th? But for right now, what do we have?
Ready?
Yep.
Move the board of selectmen vote pursuant to master general law chapter 268A subsection 1 to designate the members of the park and recreation commission as special municipal employees.
Second. And move in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm opposed.
All right, so, actually, I wrote that out on the 19th, but you want to move it up to the 12th?
Sure.
Next meeting?
Yep.
Great, thank you.
There's a second motion there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's in the fire.
Yep, and procedurally, this one follows a, a vote you took in 2011, the, when, the last time we, we were presented with this specific information. You have a full-time employee of the town who is also a part-time employee on-call of police and fire. The solution is not to declare the on-call as a special municipal employee, it's for the, it's for the department head, the police chief, fire chief, to designate, to, to certify that it is necessary in, in order to fill a vacancy to hire this individual. Both, they both made that certification and filed it with the town clerk. That allows you then to approve the certification that they have made to allow those folks to hold the dual service, yeah.
So I see the proof, I see the proof, the request of police and fire chief, yeah. Okay.
All right, move that the board of selectmen vote pursuant to master general law chapter 268A section 20, paragraph F, to approve the request of the police and fire chiefs for exemptions therefrom for personal services in a part-time call or volunteer capacity with the police, fire, rescue or ambulance department of a fire district, town or any city with a population less than 35,000 inhabitants, for Sean Coffey, Terrence Gardner and David McGlocklin.
Second. Motion made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. By the way, so, what we have going on here, and we're going to talk about the Neshova Road. The agenda number, the, the packet, the insert that we have says sidewalk, but I think it's a little bit more than that. So, Neshova Road is on the schedule to be repaved, resurfaced, reconstructed, whatever term you want to use, I guess they do have actually different meanings, but, so, there was a, what do you call them, a neighborhood meeting, and, what's that?
Local concerns.
Local concerns meeting. You received some thoughts and feedback and concerns, and you have addressed some of those. The major one that you addressed in your memo was the sidewalk, but there were a few other items. And now I'll turn it over to Eric Atkins from Green International, and he can give us a further update on the, more detailed update.
Do you mind if I have a minute or two to set some, around the water?
Don't, okay.
There is a good spot.
Usually over there.
Cheers in for at least down times, cheer and sing a song or something.
That was on this, yeah.
I think he should.
For a session, if you want to.
Good to go.
Take it away, yep.
Great, thank you.
Your time is expired.
Great, that's good. As was mentioned, this project is proposed to reconstruct the shoulder road. Folks who've been down the shoulder road may know it's in somewhat of a poor condition in many areas. Couple highlights, the project length is about almost 6,000 feet, 5,900 feet, and the limits extend for, from Nagog Hill Road, and it runs down towards Gray Road here for a total distance of about 5,900 feet. The plans read like this, they read from the top down to the bottom, back up to this next sheet, and then back down to the bottom here. Just for some rough scale, north is in roughly this direction here, in the up direction, and I know from the distance most folks are at, it's probably fairly hard to read, but these were made available at the local concerns meeting we had before, and similar, the dark gray reflects the proposed roadway, the dark green reflects the restored vegetation or soft area, whether it be lawn, vegetation, whatever the case may be. And as was mentioned, we evaluated the sidewalk based on some feedback we received at the local concerns hearing, and that is shown here in this dark brown stripe that extends along the northern side of the roadway all the way down to Gray Road. The roadway is a roll-mined collector, which means it's a road that collects traffic from local roads and takes it and puts it on the major arterials, which would be in this case Gray Road or Route 2 on the other side. It is a cut-through road, as many folks noted at the local concerns meeting. There are two posted speed limits on the shoulder road. Starting at Nagog, it begins at 35 miles an hour, and that extends down to about Cobb Lane where it then changes to 25 miles an hour where that takes it to Gray Road. It is a scenic roadway per the town code, so it has to be treated somewhat, I guess specially in maintaining the scenic character of the roadway when anything is done, that includes disturbance of stone walls, removal of trees, so on and so forth. The existing pavement widths vary from about 20 feet to 23 feet, but in average, it's about 21 to 22 feet for the most part of the roadway. There are a few deficient vertical geometry aspects, and what I mean by that is the, the bumps and ups and downs in the roadway, that's the vertical geometry I referred to. There are two sections within this 35 mile an hour stretch that are standard, less standard than a 25 mile an hour design. In other words, per ASHTO, which is what we use as a guideline for our design, there are two sections of the roadway that do not meet the criteria for a 25 mile an hour design. In addition, there are nine sections within that same stretch that don't meet the posted speed, inclusive of those two 20, those two 25 mile an hour sections. As I noted before, the pavement condition is poor, and it's primarily due to the traffic volume that the roadway sees, but also due to the poor surface and subsurface drainage which exists. So, the water is allowed to get into the subbase in the winter, that freezes, that causes the roadway to heave, it then thaws, it cracks, and that action over time causes the roadway deteriorate into the condition you see it now. And the subbase material is also fairly poor. We did do pavement cores the last fall, which I've shown there. Some of the design objectives that we had indicated for local concerns meeting and that we talked with the highway department are, are to design to the posted speed limits, to improve the failing pavement structure with full depth reconstruction, improve the subsurface, subsstandard site distances that currently exist along the roadway, and improve the overall safety of the roadway, and provide a consistent roadway cross-section with a 21 feet pavement. But we had to do this while maintain the scenic character of the roadway, minimize the disturbance to the wetlands, the habitat, the abutters along the roadway, of which there are many, retain and protect the stone walls to the greatest extent possible, and minimize impacts to existing trees, of which there are also many. So, just a quick outline of how we are and where we got to where we are today. We did survey in the fall, we did the pavement cores also in the fall, and the pavement cores measured the depth of the existing pavement and also the structure below the pavement. We presented a conceptual design at a local concerns hearing on the 5th of April, and that was done at the Littleton Electric Department conference room, and in essence, presented what you see here on these boards minus the sidewalk, and went over a few of the key concepts of the product, and at that point, we evaluated and listened to the, the input from the abutters during that meeting. Post that meeting, we evaluated including the meandering sidewalk into the project and also a number of traffic calming measures to, to help address some of the concerns that were raised during that hearing. We met with the Town of Concord Water Department last week, as a matter of fact, to discuss some of their concerns as it relates to the Nagog Pond, which is a drinking water supply for the Town of Concord. And our future plan is to, after this meeting, is hopefully set up a follow-up local concerns meeting to present the findings of our evaluation of the sidewalk and the traffic calming measures to try to build a consensus on the preferred approach going forward in the project. And also based on what we hear from this evening as well, the direction we get from the town this evening. So, some of the concerns that we had heard, both in a, in a number of emails that we had received and forwarded to us by the town, but also at the public hearing, was vehicle speeds were high, and in fact, that was, that was confirmed by a traffic count that did an informal speed study, which showed that the 85th percentile speed on that roadway is 41 miles an hour. And the 85th percentile speed is what's used to, to assign posted speed limits on a roadway, if a formal speed study were to be done and presented to, to post the roadway. Concerns with pedestrian and bicycle safety were, were mentioned numerous times. And the roadway being used as a cut-through by non-residents was a major concern and kind of a, a source of frustration by many of the residents. The traffic volume in this road basin, our count was about 6,000 cars per day, which is fairly high for a roadway of this kind of character, but it is, and it does show that it is a cut-through. And as far as the design, some issues we heard with the design were that the improved riding surface, in other words, the new paved smooth surface will encourage speeding. The improved geometry to correct the safety issues we identified would also encourage speeding. The construction duration was raised as a concern, as was the project cost. So, we wanted to just quickly go over some of those concerns that we had heard and see how we can address those. These are some concerns we can certainly address regarding the vehicle speeds and the increased speed due to the, due to the reconstruction of the roadway. As I had mentioned, we had evaluated numerous traffic calming measures that could be implemented in the project, which includes simple things like narrowing the lanes to 10 feet and striping the center, the center lane with a double yellow line and adding shoulder lines, which gives the perception of the road being more narrow. Something to the other side, maybe a little bit more aggressive, would be speed feedback signs, the radar signs you see posted, whether permanent or temporary. Converging chevrons, which are striping in the roadway, which give the appearance to the driver that they're moving faster than they actually are, which have been shown by numerous studies, both by FHWA and other than this, other DOTs, state DOTs, do have a, a, a marked difference in the speed, the actual posted, the actual speed driven. And of course, there's always police enforcement, which is usually very effective if it's done to exist. The roadway, another concern we had heard is the roadway is not safe for pedestrians and bicyclists to use. And Jim Clyde and I had walked this roadway numerous times, this is a good picture of, of an exact location where the site distance is limited as you're coming around this corner, if someone's on that inside walking or biking or pulling out of the driveway. Site distances are very limited in this area. Those are one of the things that we aim to correct under this project. One of the things we can do is correct the efficient horizontal and vertical roadway geometry, which is those, those nine areas I mentioned earlier, try to address those curves to improve the site distance and stopping site distance, so when a car is approaching someone, they have more time to see and then react, even at a higher rear speed if they're traveling beyond the speed limit. Provide a three-foot soft shoulder, or construct a new walkway, that's one of the ways we can address the pedestrian safety concerns. A three-foot shoulder was part of the original concept we presented at the hearing, and that was, that was proposed to help limit the impacts of the surrounding resource areas, namely the trees, but also the numerous wetlands that have blocked the roadway, and limit the impervious area, as that would affect permitting in regards to the drinking water supply to Nagog Pond, and install traffic calming measures. Some other concerns that we, it's difficult for us to really address as part of the design is Neshova Road being used as a cut-through. Prohibiting use in the shoulder road to non-residents and truck traffic cannot be done without approval. It has to be, has to be vetted, and in effect, you're going to be pushing more traffic on the other roadways, Shaker Lane, or you're going to be pushing up to 27, so all that has to be evaluated by master OT and approved by those roadways that you're putting the traffic on. And also, the construction duration is too long. And admittedly, there's not much we can do about that, it is what it is, and based on our prior experience with Brew Street, Wickham Ave, and now with Harvard Road, we, we expect that duration of about six months to be fairly accurate, based on our experience with those projects and other projects, and unfortunately, it's unnecessary, able to get to that end product of a finished roadway. Some cost concerns that we evaluated, I think we had estimated the cost to be between one and a half to 1.7 million for full depth reconstruction of Neshova Road. The estimated cost is based on unit costs that we've been seeing for similar products that have been constructed or are currently being constructed in the Town of Littleton, and include, as I mentioned, Brew Street, Wickham Ave, and Harvard Road. Using a rough average of those costs, $265 a foot, we would expect the cost to be somewhere in the range of one and a half to 1.7 million. Again, we're at a very early design stage, we haven't even really presented a formal design to the town yet, and once that design is refined, we can come up with a much better number at that point. We'll have a much better than the actual designs. And the expected design life for a fully reconstructed road is somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 to 30 years if it's, if it's maintained. And by maintenance, I'm referring to cracked ceiling, minor cracked ceiling, that sort of thing. To repave the road, we also looked at costs of just coal planning and overlaying the road, just to resurface the road and not address the, the geometric deficiency of the roadway, and in $2,013, that's about $485,000. The estimated design life for that is, is really anybody's guess, but given what we're seeing out there and the pattern we're seeing, we would expect that to be somewhere in the 10-year range, at which point you'd want to go back and resurface the roadway again. And I'm not an economist, I have trouble with my own home budget, but based on my simple calculation anyways, with inflation of 3%, we would estimate that the cost over 20-year design life would be about 1, 1.4 million, and that would include a year-one application of coal planning and overlaying, and then a year-10 application of cold plating and overlaying, and then a year-10 application, and then a 20th year application. At that point, we would certainly expect that, without a doubt, that road would need to be fully reconstructed at that point, given the conditions we're seeing with the subbase material. And one key component of just resurfacing the road, it doesn't really address the safety issues that people raised concerning pedestrians, bicyclists, but also the vehicle, people who drive the cars in the roadway as well. And it doesn't address the long-term pavement structure and drainage. The intent of this meeting originally was to, well, and still is actually, is to get some feedback from the town on the, I guess, for lack of a better word, the appetite to have a meandering sidewalk on the project. I think the select board has the memo we had drafted. The sidewalk would roughly cost about $300,000, direct on, $300,000, in addition to the already $1.76 million construction cost of the project. The big kicker to the sidewalk is that it ends up resulting, and we'll have to remove approximately 36 trees, just based on a rough evaluation going through. We'd have some permanent wetland impacts that we would need to address. There's some significant permitting issues. It would also trigger the VEPRA review process, which is an environmental notification form, which would certainly have significant cost and schedule issues for this project as well. So, we want to get some feedback from the town on whether that's something the town really wants to pursue, not only the town as an entity, as an official entity, but also the neighbors, whether that's something that is really worthwhile pursuing as part of this project or as a standalone project, and get some direction on which way the design should go, and also complete the 25% design, including that input, and starting that process. So, eventually, hopefully, we can complete the permitting process. And the original plan was to begin construction in the spring of 2014. That's looking like it's getting more and more difficult to probably achieve, given some of the delays we've had here and the potential permitting issues. But that could still potentially be met if the fall goes well. And as I mentioned earlier, the estimated cost is about $1.7 million. With that, if any folks have questions or comments, I'd be happy to answer them.
And questions?
Yes.
On the last slide, you had NOI. What does that show up for?
Notice of intent. That's a permit that we need to submit with the local conservation commission.
Thank you.
So, I appreciate that. I think it was pretty thorough. I have a couple of questions, but I just want to make it clear that what you're looking for tonight is, you've been working with Jimmy. Jimmy is giving you as much direction as he can. But as you're looking for a full direction from the town on what to do, Jimmy doesn't have a board, like a Board of Health Board or anything like that, so it falls on the selectmen, and you're looking for some direction and some answers to questions that you have.
That's correct.
Okay. The cost per linear foot, we've got the numbers. Did you do up there the shoulder road, cost per linear foot, including the sidewalk? Did that one that you have up there?
No, that would not be, that $265 a foot would not include the cost.
So, your sidewalk was $300,000, and the road is roughly 6,000 feet?
6,000 feet.
So, it's $50, so it would bump up to about 315 versus, and the other ones were 265, 275?
Harvard Road's the most expensive because it's the widest. It's had a lot of drainage on it. So, that's $285 a foot. Brew Street was the least expensive because of lack of infrastructure there. It's also only a 20-foot wide road like the shoulder road. That was $220.
So, you think, so you think Brew Street is the most similar?
Yeah, I think this one has some permitting components that Bruce didn't have, Brew Street didn't have, so I think that kind of might offset some of that a little bit. On the other hand, Wickham Ave. had ledge removal, so that kind of spiked that cost up a little bit too. So, that's why, you know, as a rough number, we thought maybe $265 was reasonable.
Okay. And that would be refined as you find out your quantities and everything that's going in there?
Correct. Like I said, we haven't done the 25% design. The 25% design won't have quantities. And as the doc design progresses and based on permitting input, that cost will be updated as well.
So, I've been emailing with some residents, and what their thoughts are. You can just overlay this and get the same kind of result or expectation of design life out of just overlaying, and you're still, you're going to spend half the amount of money, which I think you said was pretty much half, wasn't it?
Yes.
And then, and still have the same product. I think you answered the question, but I just wanted, I had that brought up to me, so I wanted to ask it specifically.
Yeah, and I mentioned it's somewhat subjective. I think it's, you know, we're not pavement scientists, so I, you know, I would estimate that, you know, I think that the number quoted was maybe 18 years if that was last time it was fully paved from end to end, I think was the number, if I recall and you go correctly. I would doubt that we could probably get 18 years out of a repave, but at least a satisfactory 18 years out of a repave. And the key thing to remember is that a repave doesn't address some of the safety issues that we had mentioned. It doesn't address the concerns with pedestrian safety, providing that soft shoulder. It doesn't address the sidewalk. It doesn't address the drainage issues. And it doesn't address the long-term issues involved with what's going on underneath the pavement, and that is the water that is getting trapped there and freezing and thawing. So, you could see cracking within a year and a half. If you get a good winter, a lot of rain, that's very likely to happen. So, the reason why I came up with that simplified lifecycle cost, I guess, was just to give folks kind of a sense to, if it is every 10 years, it's going to end up costing almost $1.4 million anyways with inflation at that 20th year, while a fully reconstructed road at 1, say it's at $1.7 million, a fully reconstructed roadway should still be handling it very well and probably could go another 10 to 20 years, without just a lot of significant work being done. And at the end of the 20 years of just repaving, I think it's fair to say that you'd have to go in and really do what we're talking about doing now.
Kicking the can down the road, so to speak, with a Band-Aid that may not even hold up. Big concern, I don't know, is, have you got any direction about starting this in July? Is it would be possible to start mid-July, start the construction mid-July? I don't know. You know we have a big event here, which I think is...
That goes right up.
Yeah, it goes up there. I think, you know, that's one of our things. And that's one, another reason I can see, but the appleman goes right up this road. And I think it's, you know, we're putting on a first-rate event there, and then we're sending them across this road. And I ride that every day, not every day, I ride that frequently on my bike. And that's a terrible road for biking, even when you're not racing.
Right, right. I think, and we can work with the town and with Jim, I think, you know, on the Nagog Culver project, we recently did that. It worked out well when we were able to delay the project and not have it impact the race too significantly. And I think with this project, the real goal to get the best price, you really want to get it done in one year, so they don't have to remobilize and come back the following year. But if it's a concern, that's certainly language that can be worked into the contract to, it's very far down the road. But that's language that can be worked in the contract, so the contractor understands certain things. He must have meaning. Maybe he has to keep one light on the road open for that event, so that that event can take place, or maybe he has to have temporary pavement down by that time, which may be difficult to do, or only limit a stretch of work that he does at one point, so he could have a temporary condition.
Can you reach out to Rotary and see what they say? Just, you know?
That's the chair.
Yeah.
For an event that lasts four hours, I would be very concerned about, we're adjusting our schedule for a four-hour event.
That's a good point. But, you know, yeah.
Well, there are other 10-mile loops that we can figure out on the road.
But, yeah, I know, this one's selected because there's no, not many, there's not any details needed, and it works out.
If it doesn't, I want it to work on our schedule, non-Rotary schedule.
I'll come to the public in just a minute. I want to get through the board first, and just try and do it that way.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Jim, with the reconstruction at 1.7 and the 300, the $2 million, what's that impact the so-called roads list? And have you taken an analysis of that and worked with Bonnie? Have you got how that impacts?
We really haven't, but we took a hit in the Chapter 90 funding.
Exactly.
So, it's going to affect it. And I think it's going to move her borrowing authorization up quicker than she anticipated. You know, until we got closer to the finish line, it's just hard to look at that, I guess.
Okay.
Till we know what the real numbers are.
About a good rough estimate is $2 million, $2 million five?
Yeah, that could be a conservative number at this early stage, but I'd rather say $2 million and have it be 1.7, than say it's 1.7 and have it be $2 million. I think for a budgeting standpoint, everybody's sanity standpoint, I think it's a lot better to work in that being, and how early we are in everything, it's hard to really put a hard number down at this point.
Because we're, I mean, we're seeing the economy increase a little bit, and everything in road construction is based on fuel. And with the increase in fuel, it's going to increase the prices. So, a year from now, what's the price of oil is going to affect our road.
Plus the material. The material's a petroleum product too.
Pavement.
But I mean, fuel, I think, the truck driving, but, you know, the oil is part of the product.
It affects stone, pipe.
Yeah, right.
Everything you do is based on fuel.
Yeah, you're right. And this is the petroleum product, was the point I was making. Yeah. Anybody else on the board? I have a couple more, but go ahead, boy. Go ahead.
Eric, on this new design, do you have a three-foot buffer on both sides of the road, and does that continue the entire way? Because I know that in Brew Street, we had a small buffer, but there are parts of Brew Street that have no buffer at all.
Yeah, I think the plan is, is we want to maximize that three-foot buffer whenever we can, with the understanding that we don't want to do it and have to fill in a wetland to do it, which I think we might run into in a few spots, or cut down a tree to do that. Or maybe that three-foot buffer, maybe there's a tree in the three-foot buffer. So, it's not necessarily one clear strip of three feet the whole way, although that's our goal, whenever to maximize that. But realistically speaking, like along the pond, we can't, we don't have that room to widen the road three feet, create that soft shoulder there. It's just not possible without filling in the pond, also on the wetland area. So, no, it won't be one long contiguous stretch, but we will maximize it to the greatest extent possible, similar to what we did on the street.
Now, about the three-foot shoulder. Now, that seems to be counterproductive to speeds because doesn't the wider road appearance allow people to drive, you know, give the people that they can drive faster, they're safer because it's wider, and so the two items, you want safety and you want buffer, they seem to be mutually exclusive.
As Mr. Knox will attest to it, at Brew Street, we hear it all the time, we want our road fixed, but don't fix it so good they go fast. They don't happen at the same time, unfortunately. Yes, it does give the perception of a wider roadway. You don't have that tunnel effect maybe you get sometimes. But that's why we want to try to maintain a lot of the trees. The pole, there's a lot of poles along that side of the road that we can't move. We've already discussed that as a potential option, is to move some of those poles. So, yeah, it does give that appearance. However, we are still trying to maintain the scenic character by just keeping as many trees as we can, by keeping the stone walls, which should also help. And also, as I mentioned earlier, the narrow pavement striping will also help provide that illusion that the roadway is more narrow than it really is. Well, it will be more narrow. It'll be 10 feet as opposed to what they feel now is maybe 11, 12 feet in some areas.
And a collector road such as this, what would be, with this type of volume, what would your typical roadway width be?
Normally, I mean, normally, we'd want to be somewhere in the range, I don't know, you know, 11-foot travel lane and maybe a two- or three-foot shoulder for something like this.
Paved shoulder.
Yeah, and this is like what we're doing on Harvard Road, with, you know, 26-foot wide pavement, something that affects, especially with the kind of pedestrian and bicycle traffic that seems to be occurring on this. That was a major issue on Harvard Road that we wanted to try to address, this bicycle combination. And we had that ability to do it there.
So, keeping it down to 21 addresses the concerns of trying to keep it, some sort of traffic calming measures and save streets. I mean, it's two of the concerns that I see that you seem to have responded to some of the concerns from the residents.
Correct. And, you know, part of the original layout, I think, we tried to practice a context-sensitive approach. We don't want to, we're in a superhighway where there's a rural back road. That used to be what it was in the old days, but nowadays, we can't do that with permitting, and it just doesn't make sense. So, yeah, I mean, if this was a perfect condition and we didn't have all the constraints we would have from a roadway user standpoint, a car user standpoint, we would want something a bit wider. But in light of the impacts to wetlands, trees, stone walls, increased imperviousure, and how that addresses, how that affects permitting, it just doesn't make sense for this roadway.
Does anyone, if anyone from the public has something to say, just please stand up, identify yourself in your trust, please, sir.
We're the other Brownsons on 91 Neshova Road. A couple of things, as we've talked to our neighbors on Neshova Road, we appreciated the process so far. We look forward to having a nice smooth road, and you folks have been very good about listening. What I don't understand is, there's a couple of terms perhaps that you can define for me.
Sure.
You talk about a sidewalk, but in the past, we've also used the term meandering path. Now, when you say sidewalk, I'm thinking of a concrete paved sidewalk. What is your explanation?
Yeah, that was certainly something we looked at as a potential. I think we heard from folks, and our gut was, it doesn't really meet the character of the roadway, in a sense why we didn't even investigate the sidewalk in the initial design. But what you see on this board is a meandering path, walkway.
And the surface is?
It would be paved.
Batuminous?
Yes.
Batuminous, the dark tar, the pavement, the same stuff that's on the road.
Not concrete.
All right, well, that's probably the only way to keep it any kind of permanency. You've outlined the problems that you've heard, you know, clearly, that if you take away the curves and you take away all the bumps, then it becomes the Neshova Le Mans Grand Prix, which we hear from time to time now. It's disturbing to all of us.
If I may, just to clarify, I don't mean to cut you off, but I do want to say, to your question about, you know, removing all the bumps and curves, that's actually not what we're proposing to do. We want to address the problem areas, which are a few curves, nine, I mean, of the vertical curves, there are far more than nine of them. That was one of the challenges we had in this project, actually. We want to address those ones that caused the most issues for us in terms of safety. Those two, namely, that are below a 25 mile an hour design within the stretch.
Can you point to the general area?
Yeah.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
I wanted to grab the stationing. And there's a few undulations that occur through this, and that's not our goal to get rid of those. I think the maximum we're filling or cutting the roadways, we're changing the elevation, I should say, of the roadways, maybe about a foot and a half, is the maximum, based on our preliminary evaluation. So, we're not, we're not talking about major fills or cuts to maybe make this nice straight, clean roadway. You can see the road does still go back and forth. It kind of follows the character of roadway it is now. To talk about those two curves that are less than a 25 mile an hour design, the first one is right in this area here, right in this area here, right in front of Number 88 and Number 83, in this area here. And the other one is about 500 feet away in front of Number 74, I guess, in this general vicinity. Those are the two curves that are most problematic. And like I said, there's above nine others, or seven others actually above these that don't meet the 35 mile an hour posted. But they're a little bit more manageable than the 25 mile, the ones that don't even meet the 25 mile design.
Sorry, those are vertical curves you've addressed.
Yes, yeah.
Then one last question. What is, what is the actual decision process? Who makes the final decision? You've had input from, well, some from the selectmen, a lot from us, and I think you're going to have another meeting to send.
That's correct.
So, you'll be getting more?
I mean, our goal is to have you make the decision as a group. I mean, with guy, I mean, you know, we present what we feel is, you know, the facts, I guess, and the best design, I think, for what we feel is the roadway. We listen to the input, we adjust that design, and hopefully, at the end, we can come to consensus. And I don't think anyone, I don't feel that we're going to ever get to a point where everyone's happy. Not everyone in the room will be happy, but I think we need to come to a point where I think the needs of most people are met with the understanding that some things can't be done because of X, Y, and Z, and everyone's okay with that, but we're able to address other issues. So, I think that's part of the local concerns meeting process we started. It worked, I think, well on Brew Street and Wickham Ave. It worked, I think, well on Harvard Road. We've got some good feedback from those folks, and we hope to do the same thing in this process. It's why we're here also tonight, just to try to get the consensus on whether, is there a real strong appetite to have the sidewalk or the meandering path? I should be more clear. The meandering path in the project. If there is, we can incorporate that into the project. You know, is there, is there a real appetite just to pave the road? And if that's the case, then that's the decision the town makes. It's not, I'm not, I'm just trying to present what our feelings are for what the appropriate approach should be for this roadway, and we can adjust that based on input. So, in the end, I guess the answer to your question would be, we would hope the decision would be everybody's, not one ultimatum for me, or certainly not for me. It wouldn't be for me, it would be for the town.
I appreciate the democratic viewpoint, but somebody in the end is going to have to make a decision.
The board of selectmen makes the decision.
That's your decision.
But what our consultant is saying, that he knows it's in his best interest to bring us a product that satisfies the all interested parties.
That's the answer part of the question.
Thanks, Keith.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Simon.
Thank you, Chris Simon. Just two quick questions. Is there any effort to coordinate the potential timing with the grading that would occur with the Omni project on 2A?
I don't think, no.
And would that potentially be an impact with both projects happening at the same time? They will do some grading at the entrance of the Omni project.
Yeah, I haven't even heard their schedule. From what I understand, they don't even have it all financed yet, so I... it all financed yet, so I don't know. And personally, I wouldn't want to-
This probably comes sooner.
Probably, yes. I wouldn't want to hold up this project, you know, for any, you know, I don't know if your concern is, you know, can we do them together so they can share materials? Or you want to hold, you want to do them separately so that they can?
I think if they happen at the same time, it would be too disruptive to the, to the local residents, just as far as traffic delays.
Yeah.
Yep. And the second being, to what, to what degree is the increased traffic line from that project impacting the decision on this project? If any?
Eric, did you do a full traffic study incorporating both of those projects?
No, it wasn't part of what we evaluated as part of this, the traffic study. I mean, certainly, it's reasonable to expect that folks that would be in that development would probably need to go to Route 2 and might use this as a suitable location to, most likely to take a right and go down to Shaker, it's probably a little bit easier to do that. But they may come through here, and there may be an increased traffic line due to that. But I haven't done the traffic analysis, I haven't been a part of that. I'm sure they have, and if they have, they probably have the trip generations and they know where the traffic is.
How many vehicles a day, did you say it was on?
1600.
1600, and there's 200 units going in. So that, I don't know what the trips are, but the trips are probably about 300 or 400 then, right?
Yeah, I wouldn't expect all of those to go up here.
No, but I mean, the total number of trips, right. So if you figure, you know, half of those at worst, you know, so you're looking at a 10%, could be a potentially 10% increase, maybe.
Potentially.
I'm not holding it to that, but I'm just, you know, trying to get you some numbers to, just so you thought I was saying. So Jim, do you have any thoughts on which, do you have any recommendations for us?
I mean, I understand the residents' concerns and from being in the department for a long time and seeing that we've paved the road twice, and we're getting ready to do it a third time, and we have other roads in town that haven't been done. And then we're talking about building a substandard road by the resident's standards, and potentially going back three more times before we even finish a cycle for people that are already waiting. I mean, that, I mean, it's like telling the fire department to put out the fire, but not the whole thing. I mean, we want to build a good road that's going to last a long time. And we hear the speeding concern all the time, and, you know, that's not my department. You know, I, I mean, I say that not lightly, but I would prefer to see it reconstructed correctly. I don't know if the sidewalk fits appropriately, appropriately there, and I'm just concerned about the length of time it would take to permit that. You know, Eric and I discussed, could we construct the road in such a way that the sidewalk could be put in later, so that we put features into the road that we could get it in if the permitting was going to take a long time? You know, again, it's another big chunk of change, and someone else is going to be put off. I don't want to see someone hurt out there by not having a sidewalk. You know, we kind of, drivers have to pay attention, they don't do it. It's a tough situation, and I don't see, even the rest of the town, we start doing this, it's not going to get less traffic. You know, this is going to become a problem every road we reconstruct.
And we haven't done any yet, that we're in full depth, right? Everything's been, has everything been full subdaze? Somebody in one of the email chains mentioned accidents, and I think you did the traffic count, did you do a full traffic study?
No, not a full traffic study. We did, we did a traffic count, a volume count, to get a kind of handle on how many cars for our pavement design, but we also did a review of accident data that had been available to us by the police department for the last three years. And I think we had one accident, it was very, and it was vague, and I think it was one car that hit a tree, I think Jim had mentioned to me. I know that there's a few folks who had mentioned a pedestrian, I think, was killed in a motorcycle accident that occurred, and it wasn't within the last three-year period that we evaluated.
And that's what a traffic study only would, or you would go three back?
Typically, we would do the most recent available three-year period, yeah.
All right.
I was interested in the tally up, I didn't recollect that, but that doesn't-
How long you been working on that, Mike?
A while. Too long.
And just one last thing, well, probably not the last thing, but one more. So you said you did cores out there, so the subgrade is? In, is, not right, it's inefficient and ineffective.
Yeah, there's actually a fair amount of pavement from, from our review of the pavement cores. We did, I think, 10 total, so we spaced them throughout the whole length of the project. But the subbase material is wet, especially on the sides of the roadways where there's a hill that comes down, and then it's, and it drops down. And also in the lower areas that are adjacent to Nagog Pond, where the side wetlands are almost at the same elevation as the roadway. And you go there and you see the roadway is terribly rutted, you can see the subbase is junk, basically, it's not that good, it's silty, has a lot of fine materials which holds and traps that water. And that's exactly what we want to avoid. So that's why we were recommending the full depth. On Harvard Road, the material was decent enough, we were able to, what's called reclaim the roadway, which is, you basically pulverize existing pavement, mix it into the existing subbase, and by doing that, you increase the properties, and you improve the properties of the existing subbase. This material, we felt, had too many fines, for the most part, to make that a process that we felt would work well. In addition, we want to propose some subdrains along the roadway, which capture the groundwater before it can get under the roadway, which helps prevent that freeze stop cycle from happening. We found it to be very effective on Brew Street, although it's still very young, but those do work very well, you hear water running in them often, certainly in the spring, so we feel they're doing their work.
Okay. Can you go through the permitting process quickly between the two, whether you have a median, or are we giving, tell me what the additional permitting is required for the meandering sidewalks and tight lines?
Yeah, I mean, the big thing is, because of the impacts of trees, we have more than five public shade trees that will need to be removed, we have 36 in fact. That would require in of itself a B and F and EPO review. And we feel that that's a lengthy process, I don't know the terms right off the top of my head what the duration of that is. And what that does is that opens the project for public comment, anyone can comment on it, whether they have an issue with the project. We know that Harvard, I mean, Concord has already had some concerns with the sidewalk, and we feel that that may be an issue because of their concerns with additional runoff into the pond that's associated with the impervious area, plus potential for increased pedestrian traffic, which may bring people towards the reservoir, which they actually don't want. It's potential for contamination. So there's some concerns there, so we feel that process could, could, could take quite a bit of time, and certainly keep us from probably advertising this project in the spring, if it makes sense.
And Concord residents would be permitted to come to a public hearing about a little too roadway because of their property interest.
Anyone would, is my understanding, because it goes through EPO review, yeah.
I mean, ENF, I mean, that's a few-month process to put that application together, and then the application, the review period has to be a few months, and then there's all the back and forth after that, public hearing, things like that. So you're talking six months to a year, minimum for that process?
I would think so, yeah.
Okay, all right, because you're throwing out, oh, it'll take a lengthy, but-
Especially considering this isn't a drinking water supply area, I think it would receive a little higher level of scrutiny and some review, so.
Okay, guess maybe I have something?
Beverly Brownson, also of 91 Neshova. I'm a former walker on, that's on the Neshova Road up into, well, the whole length of it. I was walking on the day that the gentleman lost his leg, and I also have heard former, I'm not certain when, it happened, when the lady lost her, lost her life, but I think that was up closer to 2A. I'm not sure of the location. I'm concerned about safety. I understand that there are two areas that are, you know, from walking, I think there are two areas that are unsafe. And one is down by the school, the, in between Newtown Road and Nagog Hill.
Are you able to, are you able to point to it on the plane, do you know?
If it's between Newtown and Nagog, that's beyond our project, that's not within our project limits.
Well, I don't know if it's Newtown at that point.
You were the camp?
It's by, by the school, the day school, or the-
The camp.
The camp.
Okay.
Camp Neshova. Camp Neshova.
Okay.
Again, it's a very dangerous, very dangerous curve.
Yeah, it is. I understand, we come down there all the time, but that's not part of this project, this stops at Nagog Hill.
Yeah. And the other one is closer to 2A. I know I walk, I'm walking against oncoming traffic, and when it turns left, I have illegally crossed over so that on, oncoming traffic can see me. And because if you're on the inside, they cannot see you, it's not, it's not the fault of the driver. And I would, those two areas, I would like to know what the plan is to make those two areas more safe.
Okay. Well, I will start with Camp Neshova, that one's an easy one, because that's not within the project. That, that is actually beyond the project. This is where our, our project ends, at Nagog Hill, which is right here. Camp Neshova is further off the plan this way. So that area unfortunately is a problem area, but it's not within this current project to address. I think, I'm guessing, and I think we had that as a background picture on the, up on the, on the screen, the other area you're talking about, down by 2A, and I apologize if I'm blocking the screen, is this curve right here. And that is part of what we hope to address with that three-foot buffer. By creating that three-foot buffer, that opening area, we're clearing the vegetation, we're recreating the area to make that a fairly flat area, which should increase the driver's visibility, improve the stopping sight distance. So even though he still may be obeying the speed limit of 25 miles an hour in that stretch, it still doesn't mean he can see what's up around that curve, and that's what I was mentioning to you earlier on the slide. That's one of the areas we want to look to address, by improving the horizontal geometry, but also that buffer space on the side of the road helps improve the sight distances, not only for you as the walker, so you know when to ditch it.
I don't walk anymore.
And for the driver, so he knows, and he has a little bit more of a comfort level as he's coming around that corner, especially at night. We were there this evening in dusk, and it was a little bit, you can see this, it's dark.
And the deer.
Right. So we are, we are looking to address that one area that is within the project, as, as there are others, but that is one area that I know of that is, and the other curve just beyond it as well, with the vertical curve as well.
Another question is about the meandering path. I know in Acton, there is one on Charter Road, and there's one on Concord Road, and they're lovely, and I'm sure you, I see a lot of people on them, and it would be a big help if that could happen so that, that we could walk. It's a lovely road, and I would enjoy doing it again, but I, at this point, I-
Okay. I think it's, I, I, you know, we just say meandering walk, just sounds like it's something that would be nice to have going through there. We'll have to talk about the impacts, but I-
With meandering path, can I just make one comment?
Yes.
Actually, two comments. Number one, it would not be suitable for bicyclists, for cyclists to ride on, it's going to be one of these-
It would not be a shared-use path, it wouldn't be like a 10-foot wide path that we would call a shared-use, where bicyclists and pedestrians could use.
Right, just, but it would, I'm sorry, it would also need to be ADA compliant, which means you have to put large filled slopes in because the hill, you would have to puff up the meandering path, so it wouldn't run with the road, it would be in parts off.
Which would make it easier to walk, it wouldn't be, you wouldn't have the steep ups and downs, but it, part of the reason why the impacts are so great, the 36 trees, the 3,000 square feet of wetlands, is because it has to be ADA compliant, which means that it cannot follow the contouring of the roadway. Whereas actually, an attached sidewalk could, by law, it could, and meet the profile of roadway, and meet, and not have to meet the 5% running slope. This detached walkway, because it is detached, has to be ADA, which is limited to 5% without a ramp, it's a braille section.
Thanks.
One last quick question?
Yes.
Hopefully a quick question.
A quick answer.
You said last time at the time, at our discussion, that after the construction of the project, that there's a likelihood that they would raise the speed limit to 40?
No, sir, what, I think what I said was, if, if the town petitioned to have the speed limit reduced, which was some of the comments we had heard, what, do I care, we just reduce the speed limit? Why don't we just reduce the speed limit, the posted speed limit? Well, to do that, you need to do a formal speed study. And that formal speed study would likely show what our informal speed study showed, which was, the 85% dial speed would be 41 miles an hour, and thereby, the posted speed limit would actually have to be posted up to 40. So we would recommend not petitioning for a reduction in speed, because it's not likely to do get just the opposite of what you want. What we can do is look at, you know, additional signs, as I had mentioned, and advisory speed limit signs for areas that are tricky. They're not enforceable by law, but they are advisory speed limit sign that would say, you know, in this area, you've seen it before, the yellow or orange background, it'd say 25 miles an hour ahead, or that sort of thing, so.
So what I'm thinking, I'm seeing is three major issues, and there may be other ones that you're looking for guidance on, and you're looking on, the first one would be full-depth reconstruction versus overlay. I think, I don't know if we want to formalize this and vote, or if we just want to have a general opinion, but, you know, my general opinion obviously is, you know, if you've got to do it, do it right, and it should be, you know, the full-depth reconstruction and proper roadway design.
I'd agree with that. I mean, that's the way the town's been going, and that's the roads that we've been really spending our money on, is doing it the right way, so I'd agree with that also.
You mean, generally agree with it?
Yeah, because when we started the 10-year project, that was the idea, that we completed it the way that was supposed to be done.
Okay. Jim, can you just give that in a minute, just, you know, that you generally gave direction on these things, agreed? Now, the meandering sidewalk versus the shoulder, or just the meandering sidewalk itself, I think that, from what I'm hearing, you know, the permitting, the cost, the, you know, the filling of the wetlands, things like that, sounds like it's not a very smart invest, or it's not a, to me, yeah, it's not a very smart investment, it's not something that we should be spending, letting on.
It doesn't have to be necessarily piggyback on this project either. Something there is some, some desire for can be evaluated further and treated as a separate-
You're looking for direction tonight, not for next year, right? So that's what we're trying to get to, okay. So I think that's why I'm on the sidewalk, is that it's just not a sound investment.
Yeah, I think when Jim said this is the third time in how many years? Since '01. Yeah, so this is the third time in 20 years, but we're actually going to address the subsurface, you know.
He's talking about the sidewalk.
He's talking about the sidewalk, though, the meandering path.
We're going to take, we're not, so I'm, my inclination is not to include that in the design.
I would agree with that.
I would agree with that as well.
Okay.
I believe a brand-new track you can walk on.
So, and then the other thing is, the, one thing I picked out was the striping. I think the double-yellow centerline, and then the white shoulder is what your, was one way, and I think that is effective, and that, I mean, it's going to be a lot more paint than there was out there, but I think it's going to, it's going to accomplish the residents', or it's going to help with the residents' concern. I don't think the, any other type of Chevron spacing, I think that'll really just take away from the effect and the, and the visual of the road, so I, I would think that double-yellow and the white shoulder, to give that narrowing, would be-
Probably.
All right.
Well, and also, the, you know, your speed is thus and such, and it should be 35 or 25. I've seen in some towns, they actually have permanently installed those, rather than the ones that the police cart around and place someplace. When you were talking about the traffic calming measure, which one were you referring to?
We were referring to the permanent, but I think the temporary would have just, I mean, they have by far the greatest effect.
Yep.
People don't like to be told we're speeding like that. But I think that, that same result would apply, whether it be a temporary, you know, tow behind situation, or a permanent installation.
Can you get a cost estimate, put that in as an alternate?
Sure.
Something like that? Something like that?
And any of these things could be done after the project was done. If you're not getting results, you could do it with Chevrons, you could add something else to the product, so.
Well, another thing that was mentioned in your memo, but not tonight, were speed bumps, speed tables, and center islands. It says here that these, the round raised area, 12 feet long and four inches in height, reduce speeds by 22%. Is there, have the residents been brought into the idea of having a road with speed bump center?
It was mentioned actually as a suggestion by some of the residents. I think at the time it was called, they referred to a speed bump, and there's differences, very distinct differences between a speed bump, which is that...
Yeah.
You may see in a parking lot, that quick jarring thing...
Right.
Versus a speed hump, which is a more gradual. It was mentioned, we discussed it at a plenary basis, we told them we'd come back and look at it with some, they wanted some, I think, a few folks actually specifically said they wanted some data to show what the effectiveness was, and that's the purpose of that memo.
Yeah.
So we, we're going to go back and present that information to them. There are some issues with drainage, with maintenance, plowing. Jim, I know he's not, he's not a big fan of those. Bicyclists aren't a big fan of these, because it does obstruct their path on the roadway.
Yeah.
But those are all obstacles that could, may, could be overcome, if that's something that there is some desire to include.
I, I'd like to refute that data. The 22, we just put something on, on this road, and the, the speed humps, it does not slow any, it doesn't slow anybody down in this, you know, one population study.
Our argument at the time to the residents before we looked at this data was that generally people see them and they slow down the first time, next time they zip, slow down, then take off again, zip, slow down.
You put them every eight feet.
Well, I think for right now, I think presenting the data as requested is fine. I don't want to present any, I don't want to give you any direction on that, or not, no direction on installing, I think, just going along.
No, and that's not my suggestion.
Yeah.
It's more that when you sit down with the local concerns, meaning again, the residents will be apprised of this memo, right? Because then that didn't come up tonight.
I'll summarize that memo on a separate point, so that we're, we're similar.
Yeah. And then you'll talk about what we did, selectmen, or how, the direction we gave you. Is there any other direction that you're looking for tonight?
That's, that's it. That's kind of what we needed to kind of move forward, because we, with, I guess we're on one side and the residents seem to be on another side, we need another direction.
What I hear tonight is there's a lot of things that, that are being done to address the concerns. That's right. You know, and, you know, and I like that, but we're also going to get a, a safer road, we're going to get a, a road that's going to last longer, and, you know, address a lot of the concerns.
That's correct.
I think also when you went through the Sembro Street, the residents of Sembro Street had a lot of the exact same concerns, the speed bumps and the speed and the whole thing. And at the final meeting you had with the residents the second time, they pointed out things that, I think the residents pretty much said this, most of the speed things that reacted like that, just work on the work.
Yeah.
And that's probably good feedback for them, is to, you know, what you've, what those residents, I don't know if we invite those residents to give their information, have the meeting down at Brew Street, so you can show them everything, you know?
Well, but the reality is 1,600 cars traveled that road every day. It might not be a road which is safe for people to walk. It just, it's a cut-through road, which, you know, 13 years ago, when you were walking on the street, it felt different. But populations increase and people know the secret cut-throughs, or the not-so-secret cut-throughs.
I like it.
The people from, who work over in Nagog, at, from about 11:15 to 1 o'clock, there's a couple hundred runners and cyclists.
Right.
You're not going to post law, post signs that they're not allowed anymore.
Right.
And so when the traffic speeds up and you kill a couple of them, I mean, something's going to happen. It is an impending danger.
I hear.
That is going to happen. You can't.
Well, the, I mean, it was smooth at one point when we first paved it, and, you know, and that was, you know, 15 or 20 years ago. 15 years ago, I looked at one of the things today, you know, what was the traffic on the path though? I'm assuming the cars still sped 15 years ago when it was smooth when we first did.
Yeah, whether you have 1600 cars or not, they're driving, they're speeding.
Yeah. And I mean, you know, that, that goes back to enforcement, you know, the streets can't be everywhere, but generally when you fix a road, they go out there frequently at the beginning. I mean, I know they're on Voltsburg Street a lot, and that's, it's up 30 mile an hour.
Brew Street too.
Speeds on up.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, Stowe. Thank you. Good job with the questions.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. All right. Let me jump in a little bit. Here we go. Let's see what we got.
7C.
7C. Full implementation update. Oh, go ahead, Keith.
Yeah, it's a long list of goals, a lot to manage, and the, the main recommendation I wanted to bring back to you tonight is, and at the risk of finding ways to use up more evenings each month, I think we need more committees. And you voted to establish a sustainability committee already, so that's one. There are two committees that, that previous boards had established, but frankly have been inactive, but we saw all the time that I've been here, economic development committee and housing committee. The, I think we should, I think we should reactivate those. I don't, not necessarily seek the same people, but, but there is a committee structure, we, they had things that they had, and I think we could reestablish those two committees and then assign them the, the relevant tasks. I would be working with, with them, and it'd be, frankly, it'd be more helpful for me to be working with a committee rather than just staff, because that, that's the, the direction we'd go otherwise, I think. And the fourth committee, bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee, we actually have a grant, $5,000 that Pam Campbell was able to get from MAPC. It has a specific mission, and you've got two wellness goals this year. And, and with that grant funding, with some other funding that the council and agent gets, we can actually put together, and we'll be bringing you at your next meeting, to, to essentially fill the grant-funded position that Pam had last summer, a wellness coordinator, part-time, grant-funded, who could help us address some of these issues. So I, I wanted to bring you the, the proposal to actually establish some committees as part of this goal implementation process. And I, I attached a matrix that, that sort of went through all the goals and to, to see either which new committees or existing committees we might, might want to think about assigning goals to. And it, and it's, it's a lot to manage, and it's not by assigning the goals, it doesn't mean that I'm not working on them, it means that I'm working on them with a committee and, and frankly, a number of committees. But I wanted to bring, it's a complicated, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a lot of, a lot of moving parts here, so I wanted to bring it back for some initial feedback and discussion.
Okay.
Well, yeah, thank you for putting it into a matrix. It's much easier to digest in this way. I appreciate seeing it this way. And I like the idea of more people getting involved and have brought up at least the sustainability committee, because we had talked about that two weeks ago, and already have people who are interested in and experienced at that sort of thing.
That's right.
So I think that there, there are people out there who want to partake and, and share their knowledge, and I like the matrix.
I have one question about this, and unfortunately I wasn't at the public hearing, but the three D established townwide standards for hiring, including department transitions and fiscal year 2014, and a little background on that? I didn't really have an opportunity.
Yeah, the, the main thing on the, the hiring, and actually, I think, I guess there are a couple of things going on in that grant, in that process. One is that we, that with many separate appointing authorities, not only the Board of Selectmen, but also myself, with or without your approval, or certain department heads, or certain other boards and committees, the personnel board and, and the town staff have diagnosed that we, we don't have a central process, and a centralized process and, and written standards for hiring. So what often happens is that the payroll department is the traffic cop at the end. They'll tell you if you did it right at the end, and they'll also tell you if you did it wrong, if, if you hadn't gone through the, the right steps in following some, some of the procedures we have. But even more, that we don't have written procedures in all cases, that, that we, and that it would benefit, especially where, with so many appointing authorities, many separate boards as well, that if we had written standards, then on those rare occasions, when a board actually has to go through a hiring process, we've got, we've got a process that's, that's written and standardized, and that it's, could, that'd be administered by the, our HR function, which is located in the payroll department.
We do have policies in place currently for posting and...
Right.
Length of posting.
Yeah, we do, but, but do.
I just wanted to make sure that folks know that, you know, we're just not, you know, there's no process in place.
Well, but what often, what hap, what often happens, though, is every time we bring, we're questioned, every time we bring a hire, a hiring.
Yeah.
And it, frankly, it's just simpler if we just have a, instead of having each department head defend themselves each time they bring a hire, that we'd rather have a standard procedure which is done with the cooperation of the department heads and the appointing authorities. Let's just agree on what their procedure is so that we don't debate each time, well, did you set up a citizen committee? Did you do this? Did you do that? Like, let's have a, you know, let's just have a, some kind of a standard process.
It should be, but it should be different for different levels, right? Because, I mean, and is that, and is that going to apply for, you know, for us hiring a, you know, new town administrator, heaven forbid they should ever come?
Yeah.
Why, I mean, is that going to apply you and...
Well, that one, you've already got a town bylaw that tells you, that tells you what to do with establishing a search committee and all of that. But it has, it has, it has more to do with, sure, department, department head hires and, and internal department hires. And because we do have appointing authorities that get to appoint department heads. And it's just, and if they don't do it, but once, you know, in blue moon, it, it's, it can be, we want it to be a helpful resource to them to see, look, there, there is a right way to go through this process, and, and here's what it is. And it, it's an issue that has been diagnosed, you know, every time we review our personnel practices, and it would be helpful to do, and I think that's where the, the grant came, the, the goal came up. But also with respect to, and, and the, you know, the transition planning, that's something that we're going to have to deal with, with, with anyway, that we've got some major positions within the finance department that we know, with, in, in the police department, then, and there will be issues. So that's to say that it's timely for us to go through this process and have a, and have a procedure on what, what are best, to identify what best practices are.
Yeah, well, if I could, if one of my concerns, and I expressed this to Keith Beadman before the meeting, would be that this one's being held by the personnel board of whatever, say they met for the next six months and come up with a, a policy, it'd be something that I would want brought back to this board before they would initiate and put into their policies without us having any, any say in it.
Well, I think every board should, every board who has an appointing authority should have some feedback on it, right?
Yeah, that's what, yeah, I've written it in a way to be, and I think it said in coordination with the appointing authorities, but you can...
Sorry, I, I know I interrupted you, but I was trying to reinforce your point. Did you have more, Joe?
No.
And, and that being said, I mean, this board has already accepted a succession plan from the police chief, and, you know, so I can understand moving forward, but we have something in place for that. So as we move forward and this, this goal gets developed, I think that we can't lose sight that we have a succession plan.
Right. And I, yeah, I mean, beside that, I think we have to be very careful about handcuffing these. I think standard procedures would be, would be nice in some instances, but I'd hate to have, to make someone go through a standard procedure when they have the best person right there, you know, something like, like the hiring, like the library trustees, you know, if they know they have somebody in waiting or somebody like that, that they want to just appoint, do they have to go through...
Well, this is, well, I mean, I can tell you...
So there's a lot to be discussed, I guess, to just...
Yeah, I, I think so, but the one thing that we weren't planning on telling one, anyone, was who to hire.
Right.
That we were setting up the process, and we weren't saying, do your internal look, see if you, if you know who it's, you want to hire, and you don't want to do a competitive process. I mean, we're, we're not even going there. We're not, we're, you know, that, that we're, we're assuming that we're, what, what we're coming, coming up with is an objective process that the department had, that, that the appointing authority either takes advantage of, but they don't.
Okay.
And that's got to be specifically spelled out.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think this is a lot, lot going, a lot of work to be done. It'll be a lot to get that done in, in a year, but...
We can do it, Ted.
Well...
Be, be optimistic.
Oh, okay. I'm a lot there. All right. Gee, Keith, were there any committees or boards that we can solve?
I'm sure there are, but maybe if we wanted to establish a goal on sunsetting committees, we could probably methodically go through. There, there aren't a lot, but there were probably some that we've established in the past for a particular short-lived purpose that we never got around to abolishing.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we can do that.
Patiental committee.
No, patient implementation committee.
Yeah, that's right.
Patiental committees are even smaller.
Except we're, we're signing a goal this year, so, you know, next year, you can...
A goal that has already been embedded.
Yeah, fair point. All right. So where we going from here?
So basically, we're just going to say create these committees tonight, right?
Yeah, I thought I could, if, if you could do that, then we can, you know, start advertising. And, and I'm not asking that we decide tonight how many members on each one, because frankly, I think we're going to find out from who we get. If we voted something tonight, then we're going to see who applies, and we'll have to amend it later.
And some, well, when do we come up with the, the charge of each one of these? Or is this just stated in the goal?
I think, I think we'd have to come up with a charge once they create it. Well, the, the established ones, the economic development committee is already...
Yeah, I mean, they may or may not have charges, but I think we probably want each committee to help us review.
Okay, all right. I just want to know which step came first.
Okay. All right. Well, what, what's clear, though, is that we have, as far as what their short-term objectives